Welcome everyone, I call the November 9th, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting to order. And now invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me, please unmute your microphones and turn off your video while we display the banner. I'll give everyone a minute to do that. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation, one nation, under God. Indelible with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation dash twenty dash twenty-eight regarding open public meetings is still in effect, therefore this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally, signup sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you. First item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval, are there any changes to the to tonight's agenda? Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, Mayor, and I don't have it in front of me because I have lost a couple of things on my screen, including the Zoom meeting, so I can't see this, it is the Vision Zero. In the consent agenda.
Ooh, AB twenty-one dash one-six-three, consideration of inter-agency agreement with Washington Traffic Commission for the Target Zero Task Force Grant.
Yes, please.
Alright. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none others. Uh, moving on to public engagement opportunities. It's a little chopped off for me.
We were trying to make it a little smaller, I don't, there you go. Got a bit of a new format this evening.
Alright, we have a Native American Heritage Month, November marks the Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate and recognize the culture's accomplishments. And core contributions of Native Americans and Alaskan natives. Then we have celebrating our veterans, Veterans Day is this Thursday, November eleventh, a day to honor and thank the brave men and women who have served and sacrificed for our country. And then we have the grand opening of the pop shops on Main, the community is invited to attend the grand opening of pop shops on Main, taking place Thursday, November eighteenth at three PM. Attendees will be the first to step foot inside Bothell's for newest downtown boutiques, learn more at bothellwaa.gov/popshops. Alright, next up we have. Presentation of UW Bothell Native Kokoni and Salmon Watcher Program, I believe we'll have Surface Water Manager Janet Gier.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, with me tonight is Dr. Jeff Jensen, a faculty member of the Biological Sciences at UW Bothell. Since 2012, Jeff's research has focused on salmon in the Lake Washington Basin, particularly Kokoni. He will be presenting this evening on his findings related to native Kokoni and the Salmon Watcher Program. After his presentation, we will be happy to answer any questions you may have. Jeff?
Thank you Janet, I will start my sharing now. And you should be able to see. My screen, is that the case?
Looks like we see your desktop.
Ah, okay, let me fix that one moment. Let's see, there we go. Alright. So I am very happy to be here to talk to you tonight about Kokoni and thank you very much for. Inviting me to come out and say a little bit about some of the research I've been doing and some of the ways that it may. Form a nice way of interacting with the community. So as Janet mentioned, I've been very interested in Kokoni salmon. Kokoni salmon are form of sockeye salmon that don't migrate out to the ocean, instead they just go out to Lake Washington. And when we think about salmon in the Lake Washington Basin, normally what we think about is, well, you know, the big salmon like Chinook or Coho and so on. But in fact, it was Kokoni that were by far the prominent, most prominent salmon that were in our watershed. Early settlers in the area commented on how. Abundant they were, all of our small streams around here had lots and lots of Kokoni in them, people described them by the thousands, even in little streams like Lion or Macalay. Certainly North had many Kokoni in them, and Native Americans have used them for a very long time, so since time immemorial. Even early in the twentieth century, there were still harvests of Kokoni salmon in Lake Washington. And the mouth of Swamp Creek and presumably up here around North Creek were also sites of harvests. So Kokoni have a long history in the area as our primary native salmon in the basin. And they've had a pretty rough go of it. They, at one point, were in just about all of the small streams that we have going into Lake Washington. What I have marked here is different colors indicating three different runs of Kokoni. There was an early run Kokoni that entered like Isaguac Creek from Lake Sammamish. There was a middle run Kokoni that was found throughout tributaries of the Sammamish and Lake Washington. And then there's a late run Kokoni that goes into some other tributaries of Lake Sammamish. And North Creek, as you can see, is indicated here as having had middle run Kokoni. And in fact, very early on, they were recognized, this is a Seattle Times article from nineteen seventeen. First, I have to kind of laugh at the idea of Canyon Park, which is where this is describing being a remote stream, but they were. Planting fish in there and they remarked that there were these fish that would come up North Creek from Lake Washington and spawn in the headwaters, they were certainly talking about Kokoni salmon at that point. So the current status of Kokoni, or at least as of a year ago, was that these late run fish that go into lakes, well, start with the early run fish that go on Isaguac Creek. Were extinct, so they got wiped out in about two thousand and two. Middle run fish were considered to be extinct in the basin. At least back till the year two thousand. And late run Kokoni were hanging on just by very small numbers in the Sammamish, some of the Sammamish river tributaries. So this graph right here just describes abundance of Kokoni in Lake Sammamish, the only population thought could be remaining. There have been a couple good years in the last ten or so years, but. Recently, it's been terrible, we've had, I think we had eighteen fish come back last year, it's usually less than two hundred. I will say this looks like a good year, so there's some hope for those late run fish. What I'm mostly interested in is these middle run fish. Because I started noticing about two thousand seventeen that, boy, there are these small sockeye that seem to be running in North Creek and in the Sammamish River. Past the time when sockeye are present, so I spent a lot of time out there watching fish. And I realized that these fairly small salmon were actually spawning with each other. This one's actually been killed by a heron, you might see a little trineular mark there. So. It made me start to wonder, well, maybe there are some of these Kokoni left. Most people thought anything that looked like a Kokoni in Lake Washington and the Sammamish River was probably part of the sockeye population that had been introduced much later in the nineteen thirties. So I started looking at those. And gathering more information about what had happened in the past. And in fact, two thousand eleven had another big run of Kokoni, or at least Kokoni-like fish. Again, people didn't know if they were native or something that had been introduced later. This is taken actually right above four oh five on North Creek. There's an area that there that's quite good for spawning and there were lots of carcasses and live fish that were collected in two thousand eleven. So based on that, I made some pretty scant evidence, I made some predictions. I predicted that twenty twenty would be a strong year because these fish generally live about three years between spawning cycles. Two thousand eleven was good, don't know what happened in two thousand fourteen. Two thousand seventeen was good, so I thought maybe twenty twenty would be good. I thought that this population might be genetically distinct from introduced sockeye in the basin. Because they seem to spawn a bit later. And I thought maybe these could be remnants of that native middle run population that was thought to be extinct. So I call them three wishes because it's probably kind of wishful thinking, but this is what I thought would be a most interesting outcome. So I started looking particularly with particular care in twenty twenty, and that was the year I started up the Salmon Watchers Program. There was a county program that ran from nineteen ninety-five to twenty fifteen. That was very good at getting people excited about and involved with salmon monitoring. And I just thought that was a great program, I knew there was hunger out there in the community for it. So I thought, well, this would be great, we can bring back salmon watchers, then I can get more information about what's happening with salmon and all of these streams in our area. So I fired up the salmon watchers, had them out watching salmon, reporting on carcasses, helping me get a lot of. Data and tissue samples for genetics. We saw some things that really surprised me, this is a Chinook salmon running up Lion Creek. There hadn't been a report of Chinook salmon in there for a long time. And in fact, we see a lot of things that are kind of surprising. Last year, this is at the mouth of Little Bear Creek in the Sammamish River. We had very nice runs of these Kokoni-like fish, so it turned out they did show up in good numbers in two thousand twenty, as I had hoped. So I hope you can get a sense, that's a good number of fish that are in there, and I could keep panning around there, there's probably a thousand fish at the mouth of Little Bear Creek. There's one sockeye here. So this relatively large one, I don't know if you can see my pointer on the right side of the screen, and the rest of them are Kokoni. Or Kokoni-like fish. So I had lots of samples there for which I could do genetics. And. To get a sense of how to interpret the genetics, I'll just describe what was previously known about genetics in the basin. So these little circles describe. Groups of samples that seem to be quite similar. We won't go into details of what the axes are, but just think about where the clusters are. So there's introduced sockeye, these are what have run into the Cedar River, we know those aren't native to the basin. There's Bear Creek sockeye, it's a little less clear what's going on with them, they might be native, but it's not as clear. Kokoni are generally considered to be native in Lake Sammamish, this population has been eliminated. And these are the late run fish that are still around, so we can find some different clusters genetically when we do analysis. So I took some of the samples from twenty seventeen and twenty twenty, and the thing that really popped out. Was there is this distinct cluster. Of these small fish, they don't sit genetically with Bear Creek sockeye, even though they're right next to them, they certainly don't sit with the introduced sockeye. And they're fairly close to the Lakes of Mamish Kokoni. So that strongly suggests not only are they genetically distinct, but that they're actually a native population, which is really cool because. It's been a really tough hundred years in the Lake Washington Basin with all the habitat change, so it's really surprising to find evidence of native Kokoni. We went back and looked at some samples that were collected in two thousand eleven, I mentioned that there was a big run that year, and they landed right on top of the samples I was collecting in two thousand seventeen and two thousand and twenty. So what it looks like is we still have a native run of Kokoni in Lake Washington. And they come right through our neighborhoods, in fact, right through the campus of the University of Washington Bothell. What I'd really like to do, and I'm still working on this, is get some genetic information from some samples that were collected in the eighteen hundreds. This fish was collected in eighteen eighty-nine by Orson Bennett Johnson, it was the entire Natural History Department at. University of Washington at the time, so we haven't gotten there yet, but we have gotten a little bit of information, so should be able to pin that down more later. But for now, there's good reason to think that we have native Kokoni locally. I think some things that are going to be really important for maintaining this population is first, more outreach and education so that people know about it. People won't care about it unless they know about it, and in fact, this is something unique to our area, that's a really fun thing that Bothell and Woodenville. Have their own species of birds, their own population of remaining fish that aren't found elsewhere. So I will continue with salmon watchers, I think there are ways we could potentially partner more closely with Bothell in the future. There is a very limited spawning area for this population, this map may be a little bit hard to interpret right at first, but this is five twenty-two going across here. And this is four oh five, I've indicated by the size of the dots how important these spawning areas are in terms of sheer numbers. The mouth of Little Bear Creek is really important, that's a large proportion of the spawning that goes on. But so is this little area just above four oh five within Bothell. The Bothell wetlands have spawning going on with it. There's always fish hanging out under five twenty-two in North Creek, I can't tell if they're spawning there, I don't think they do a lot. But there's a little bit of spawning that goes on in the Sammamish River down here as well, that's it, as far as I can tell on the typical year. It may be in really strong years, they spread out a little more, but these are certainly, three and these two are certainly the most important spawning sites for this population. This on the left is showing a spawning area within the UW Bothell Wetlands, there are a couple of fish spawning here. And you can see where there's some spawning nests elsewhere in the gravel. And then third, and this is something I've been working on for quite a while, I think it's important to try to supplement some of these smaller streams that used to have lots of Kokoni in them, but don't anymore. And what I think is the best strategy for doing that is remote site incubators, I run some of these on some small streams with Coho salmon, just as a way of. Getting them running and functioning effectively. This is also a great community outreach tool, the idea is that you harvest eggs from the wild. And you put them in protected boxes where they're less prone to being damaged by stormwater, that's a huge problem for Kokoni in particular. Or from siltation or other kinds of things that can kill eggs in large numbers. So with that, I'll just say a quick thanks to a whole variety of people that have helped me out on this project and a thank you to you for. Having me visit tonight, and I'll just mention, if you want to learn more about Kokoni, particularly the Lakes of Mamish Kokoni population, there's a nice documentary out, we'll probably have some showings once we can. Gather in greater numbers at Bothell. And with that, I thank you for your attention and I'm happy to have any questions.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you Jeffrey, that was a great presentation, I'm remembering back when we tried to name Wayne Golf Course. That some schoolchildren had submitted the name of Redfish. To honor the Kokoni and we were told by some people that they were not native to Lake Sammamish, so I guess whoever that was stands corrected, so. That's really interesting for us to learn now, thank you.
But that's certainly far in the minority, yeah, they weren't thought to be native to Lake Sammamish, they certainly were native to Lake Washington and some population was.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, I just totally shook this up and I'm going to go back and just. Enjoy reviewing this again, I read an article in the Salish Sea Current Magazine. About the work that you've been doing and it's very, very exciting. And anything this city can do and council members can do, you just let us know and don't hesitate to ask. I would love sometime if we could do a small tour of the wetlands beyond the border. That would be, that's a dream of mine.
Okay.
But a question is. Do you have a gut feeling about once we get the shoreline along Wayne Golf Course, that park area, get that remediated? Can we make it inviting for Kokoni?
So the way need a creek there, as it runs now, it's a little small. But my understanding is there's the potential for bringing in more flow to that stream. If there was more flow, it seems like a perfectly suitable Kokoni stream if we can keep the sedimentation down. I think one of the main concerns there is that if you have too much sediment coming through, you would end up choking up the eggs when they're in the gravel.
Right. So do they have a specific distance that they like to be away from the slough? You know, once they're off the slough, like how far upstream that they want to go?
Yeah, Kokoni generally spawn in the lower stretches of these small streams, so they don't need to be very far off the main reach, they can go way up. So like that newspaper article from nineteen seventeen, that was way up at Canyon Park. But they don't have any specific distance they need to be away from the slough, the main thing is just finding enough flow and good gravel that they can spawn in.
So in theory, we might, Wayne might be able to create that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, with more flow, so the nice thing about Kokoni is the fry, once they emerge from the gravel, they go right out to the lake, in this case, Lake Washington. So you don't have the same kinds of requirements for year-round quality habitat that you do for Coho or for Chinook, that are going to spend a lot of time in these waters, so that certainly is helpful.
Okay, and then I have one other brief question, how susceptible are they to predation? Like are other spawning salmon are in Lake Washington, or do they have a little more broader range of tolerance of water temperature, or is it pretty similar?
Uh, it's generally similar, they have the advantage of not going through the locks where there's miles of gnashing teeth to try to eat them as they go through. Since they're not going out to the ocean, they avoid all of that. The fry tend to be out in the middle of the lake and they avoid a lot of predation that way as well, they migrate out during the night. The adults coming back actually get a surprising amount of predation by otters and herons. I'm just amazed at how many speared Kokoni I find with have marks from herons in them.
Oh my goodness, right, I know, it's hard to be grudge herons wanting to eat, though. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And please stay in touch.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks Mayor. This is super timely because I, my family went to the Isaguac Hatchery this last weekend and had a really good time looking down there. One of the things that really caught me was looking at the spawning map and how. What we do here in Bothell has a pretty sizable impact on the future of this run. Um, I mean, this is like, it's, it's pretty much all right here, and I know you, you mentioned stormwater, you mentioned silt. What can we do to make those specific spawning areas more habitable? Or what can we protect them from and what could we do to? Give them more habitat, like what are the concrete things is a policy decision that we could do to make things better for the salmon?
Uh, well, thank you for that question, so one of the things I think is important you're already doing, everybody's trying to control stormwater. That I think is by far the largest issue that we have to deal with. So part of what I think about Kokonis being is just another good reason, in this case, a very local reason. To do the kinds of stormwater detention and preservation of wetlands that you're already doing, so more please is always a nice thing. I think. Managing construction, so one of the things that unnerves me about this population is some kind of ill-timed. Construction or not properly monitored construction in fairly few places could have a really large impact on the run. And then I think part of it is just the other kinds of things we do, like letting people know that these Kokoni are here, I have some ideas for murals and signage and so on. So that. They have something less abstract than Puget Sound begins here, when they're trying to decide what to do with that can of oil or how much fertilizer to use. I think if people kind of grab on to the idea that we've got a unique little fish population right here. It's a little easier to get people jazzed about doing some of the kinds of things they hear they should do, but don't always follow through on. I think this is one of those things where our local actions make a huge difference because stormwater and pollutants are a large part of a very local problem. That homeowners can take care of by, say, not draining their roofs directly into the stream, for example. So those would be my thoughts. I'm sorry, you still.
Oops, when it comes to managing construction, what are the things that you see in construction sites that are problematic?
Uh, the main ones that I see are first unregulated or at least not, not adequately regulated. Flow out of the construction areas so that it carries a lot of silt. One of the things we look for in quality habitat is how embedded is the gravel? Often you find gravel that's kind of in this matrix, a very fine sediment, and then it becomes unsuitable for salmon to spawn in. So when I see drain pipes coming out of construction sites into streams, what that means is that it's likely to also be carrying a lot of sediment. So, you know, ideally, there would be bales and detention ponds and all the nice things that we should use, but you still see a heavy sediment load coming out. So that's, I guess, one of the biggest challenges, and then just the accumulated impervious surface. That's where we get quick runoff into streams so that instead of going from two to seven thousand cubic feet or whatever is appropriate for that stream, it's from. Two to twenty-seven thousand cubic feet in a really short amount of time, and that's pretty lethal to salmon. Kokoni don't lay their eggs very deep because they're fairly small fish, and so they're particularly susceptible to that kind of thing.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Well, Dr. Jensen, thank you very much for your presentation, found it very informative. And I must say, I like your shirt a lot.
Alright, thank you, yeah, my daughter made it for me, she's a great seamstress. And about that tour of the Bothell Wetlands, just reach out to me sometime, we can make it happen, the salmon are mostly gone now, but I'm still happy to go out there with you. I won't make you pick up any carcasses while we're there because we can't find it. Alright, well, thank you.
Great, thank you. And on to our next item, we have a. Report on the fire station forty-two and forty-five project updates. And I believe we'll have, yep, there we are, we have our facilities manager Jeff Sperry.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Jeff Sperry, Fleet and Facilities Manager, joining me tonight is Crystal Lutz, Project Manager from OEC Services, and Noah Toomey, Project Manager from Design Builder BN Builders. During tonight's presentation, we will show overall progress, accomplishments, milestones and impacts related to the fire station projects. At the end of the presentation, we'll be here for, to answer any questions, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Crystal Lutz and turn it over to her for the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, tough act to follow, I don't have any custom clothing. But we'll, we'll try our best here, so this is our update on the fire station forty-two and forty-five rebuild program. Our agenda for tonight is a project overview, COVID impacts, permit status, construction progress, schedule and financial updates. So getting right into the project overview. You know, Jeff, at the beginning of the project, kind of joked and said, oh, it sounded so easy, just rebuild two fire stations, but really it's seven projects in one. And starting here at the Canyon Park area, you know, that's obviously the rebuild of Station Forty-Five, but in order to make that happen, we need interim stations. Which is where Station Forty-Five comes in as well as Cedar Grove, and then for Station Forty-Five, that rebuild. Requires an interim modular station onsite at Station Forty-Two. As well as relocation of some of the admin staff from Forty-Two to City Hall, and that work has been completed. Admin staff has occupied City Hall. And then as part of the percent for the arts program, there's also a distinct art project at Station Forty-Two. This just kind of situates you on each of the sites, so the fire station forty-four is off to the right here, and this is the modular housing that we're providing at Station Forty-Four. Station Forty-Five demo was just completed last week, the whole building came down, we're into groundwork and utility work now. Station 45 demo was just completed last week. The whole building came down. We're into groundwork and utility work now. Station 42A, which we call it, the interim station, has a modular building that we got from Shoreline Fire Department. That was set in its final location actually just today. And then the groundbreaking for Station 42 occurred last week. Station 42, some of the permanent elements for the final construction are the retaining wall that you see here against the residential properties on the far end of the property. And then this is just an image of what the art at Station 42 will look like right as you enter off of the corner of 185th and Beardsley. So COVID impacts, obviously, still a topic, unfortunately. It has impacted the project, construction materials, both from a material escalation standpoint and a supply chain delay standpoint. And that, you know, even today, changes, you know, continuously. Some products that were in supply a while ago aren't now. But we have mitigation strategies in place for that and are trying to release everything as early as possible and warehouse products so that we don't run into delays due to supply chain. Permit approval delays. We were affected by the fact that with COVID, the new code adoption was postponed twice, ultimately moved to March of this year, which caused a lot of permit intakes under the old permit at the end of February, and then a lot of new permits in March, which basically overloaded the permitting department. And then there were also associated staff impacts with that. And then ultimately, what this has done to the project contingencies, and in this case, the design build contingencies, are the escalation contingency has been exhausted, which, you know, in some ways you could say is, is okay, because we are at a point where we're in construction. So we're completely bought out. So that is, that is okay. And it's also impacted some of our design and estimate contingencies. And we'll get into the financials of that a little bit later in detail. Permit status, so we're in receipt of all of our major permits for Station 44 that has been occupied. There were some easements that needed to be recorded associated with that project. That has all been taken care of. 45, both the demolition building permits are in place, same with the interim station for 42, as well as the building permit for Station 42 with the art permit that has been approved but pending issuance. A little bit more on construction progress, some more close-up photos of the demo of the building. Firefighters were able to move into the modular at Station 44. Everything was moved over there by the design build team. Fencing, tree protection, temporary construction, water erosion control was all installed in builders and subcontractor trailers are onsite. All the utilities are cut and capped and demolition of the building is complete, and now we're starting with earthwork. Station 42, again, the groundbreaking ceremony last week. The retaining wall is part of the permanent station installed. Utility excavation is taking place currently for the interim utilities to serve the modular housing, as well as the modular sprung structure for the apparatus during the interim. And then the firefighters will be moved to the modular station at the end of December. And demolition of Station 42 will begin in January of next year. So schedule updates, this is basically the overall schedule milestones. The first three here obviously have occurred. GMP was approved, construction has started. So some of the next highlights are January. The foundations are going to be complete for Station 45, framing complete in February, permanent power in March, drywall complete in April, and then substantial completion in August of next year, which is the date when the firefighters can occupy the station. For Station 42, similar, same GMP approval date. Foundations will be complete in March, framing in May, drywall in July, permanent power in October, and then a substantial completion date and move-in for the firefighters in February of 2023. Financial updates. So our approved budget was 38 million, and I apologize that the numbers are a little hard to read here for some reason. But you can see here, the blue is Station 42 and the green is Station 45. There's approximately a 60-40 split between the two stations. And then the lighter shaded colors are what has been currently billed to the project. So plenty of money and plenty of work remaining. The next one is allowances and contingencies. And the way this graph works is that the blue bars are what was approved in our GMP with the final project. And the green is what has been approved to date. We had a couple of allowances within the GMP. One was for moving allowance, and the other one was for jurisdictional utility fees. Both of those have plenty of funds remaining. The next bucket here are the contingencies. Again, in green, what is currently approved. You will notice that the escalation contingency has been exhausted, like I mentioned earlier. And again, that is due to the impacts of COVID and material escalation. And in this instance, it was primarily or almost exclusively related to wood material escalation. Construction contingency, as expected, is still remaining in full because we just started construction. And then owner contingency, you see that negative bar, which is actually a good thing because that means we actually added to the owner contingency, and that was due to some savings that we were able to realize that were associated with the mechanical electrical plumbing designs. And with that, that's the extent of our update, so open for any questions.
Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Krista. I'm curious, so the escalation is, was that for both projects or just one? I'm curious because you talked about the wood escalation, and I know it was super high a couple of months ago, but I know it's come down, and so I'm trying to understand kind of the flow of costs.
Yeah, so the escalation or all contingencies that are listed on this slide are for both stations combined. And then the wood escalation had to do with with the buyout of that wood package. So that buyout started as early as GMP approval back in February, but then incrementally, those contracts were released. And you're absolutely right that wood has come down. So we are anticipating that there might be a wood savings that we can now gain that's in the realm of $20,000 or so, since that pricing has now gone down again. But the way we had to purchase those contracts when they were executed is when wood was essentially at an all-time high.
Right, right. Okay, so there, there should be some savings.
Right.
We're quite a ways out from, from building 42. And so it would be surprising to me if we're paying, paying for that so early. Anyway, I was just curious because I had seen the price of wood come down, and I wasn't sure how the timing went. So, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I was looking at the bunks on Station 42, and it appears that there were 10 bunks. My guess is we're building these stations to last another 20 to 30 years. And, and we'd be foolish not to think that our, our personnel will not increase during that time. So is there, we can add more bunks?
Yeah, and, and you'll actually note that on this slide here, it says 10 bunks plus three. So the current design actually has three additional bunks that will be provided as shell and core only so that in the future, you can build out those bunks completely. So there's capacity to add three more firefighters in the future.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I am not seeing any other cards. Councilmember Agnew. On mute.
That artwork that's at Station 42's, is that going to be lighted?
Yes, there will be lighting at the base of it. Let me see if that's... So you'll see kind of in this image, there's, there's sort of a base around it, and the artist is providing lighting for that. So it's uplighting of his sculpture.
Thank you.
Not seeing any further, any questions, so thank you for the project update.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, on to council committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report they'd like to share? All right, quite a bunch. Let's keep on moving. So we'll head on to visitor comments. So in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment and writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk, no later than 3:00 PM today, were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City clerk, I believe we do have.
We do, thank you. Written and live. Yep, we do. Thank you. We received four written comments, so I'll go through those first. The first one is Sarah Gustafson. She wrote regarding support for a COVID vaccine mandate for city staff and first responders. David Levitin wrote in regarding AB 21166, the budget update in the Bothell Landing Master Plan with concern for increase in spending without increase in revenue. Carmen DeZil, from the North Shore Schools Foundation, regarding AB 168, 21168, thanking the council for consideration of support for the homeless students and students in Meade and Bothell. And Judy Fast from Hope Link regarding AB 21168, also thanking council for their continued support. And then we have one person signed up to speak live this evening, and that is Andrew Nelson. So we will get him paneled in. Mr. Nelson, when, when you're ready, you have three minutes to speak.
Excellent. Now, first off, thank you, city councilors. I'd like to thank Mayor Olson, Councilor McCullough, and Councilor Agnew for their service to Bothell. But I wanted to talk about today about, you know, how I think the city manager, city council dynamic should be. The way I kind of look at it is the city manager is the quarterback, and you are the coach. You know, the coach makes the game plan and the quarterback executes. And, you know, I don't feel like that's always been the case. A good example is last year's budget. With the human services being cut, as a community, we obviously spoke out, and you guys did fix it, so thank you. But it, you know, it shouldn't have gotten to that point in the first place. I'm excited to, to meet the new, the city manager candidates at the meet and greet pretty soon here. I also wanted to say that, you know, they have to have a shared vision with you. I think that's, you know, I think you guys know that, but it's just something I feel like needed to be said. I also agree with Sarah Gustafson about the mandate for city staff for vaccines. I think that's a great idea. I sent an email to you guys saying the same thing, not in public comment, but just, just an email. So I think that's something you guys should take action on or at least consider. So thank you guys for your time and your service, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have, Mayor Olson, but I will ask if anybody else in the audience wishes to speak under visitor comment. Please use the raise hand function, and I will get you paneled in. Minute to do that. I'm not seeing anyone, Mayor Olson.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to consent agenda. So we did have one item pulled. AB 21-163, consideration of interagency agreement with Washington Traffic Commission for the Target Zero Task Force Grant. Councilmember Thompson, you pulled this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I just had a couple of quick questions. First, I haven't seen anything that we've done in council regarding Vision Zero. Is there anything else we're doing strategically around Vision Zero, or is it just enforcement?
I believe Captain Johnson and Sergeant Rogers are joining us. They may not have heard your question, councilmember.
Okay. I mean, the, the reason I ask, and, and, you know, from, from reading this, it really looks like this is a way that we can get funding to help. You know, funding helps. Enforcement's probably the least effective thing that we could do if we were truly interested in Vision Zero. And I would love to have a broader conversation around Vision Zero and what that looks like over the course of the next year. Now that everybody's in here. Hi, guys. The, is there anything else that we're doing as a city around Vision Zero? Or is it, is this kind of our, our, our one thing that has that name on it?
Well, you know, I'll chime in real quick. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. For those that don't know and watching on YouTube, my name's Ken Sherblik. I'm the chief of police. I've got a couple of guest speakers here tonight to kind of help address this. But Target Zero is something that is run through the state, Washington State Traffic Safety Commission. And we have these high emphasis patrol areas where we have fatalities. That's the focus of it. When you see your holiday DUI patrols, your distracted driving patrols, that is what this program is. I know that there oftentimes can be some concerns about, an example, municipalities who may be using traffic citations to fund their budget. That's not the city of Bothell. I can let you ask Chris Bothwell about that. But we, that's not how we operate. We spend most of our time on traffic stops trying to educate the public. We write those who need additional reminders to slow down. I think any one of us that has ridden a bike through town or commutes back and forth to work, spends any time on the road, there's a fair number of people that are on cell phones, distracted driving. That's also part of our downtown plan when it comes to enforcement as we create these bike lanes. And there's a fair amount of funding that comes with that, and it's not just to the PD. It's to the courts, it's to the schools, it's the projects that occur. So again, this is to, this is a regional grant, and I'll let Sergeant Rogers speak to that. But it's because these other agencies, we all work together as a task force on these areas where we have fatalities. And we've had a few in town as well, and that's why we qualify also for this grant is due to the fatalities. Another thing that we've also seen since COVID is I don't want to say complete disregard the speed limit, but the, the speeds out there are just ridiculous that we're catching. And it's not just 10 over. We're talking people doing 55, 60 miles an hour in a 35 zone. And as some of you may know, stopping is key to avoiding a collision. At that speed, the chance of survival for a pedestrian or bicyclist, it's slim to none. So I, I kind of want to try to help answer questions you may have. We don't have a quota for, for the city of Bothell Police Department. We focus heavily on education. We are mindful that the, frankly, the people that are the most impacted by distracted driving and speed oftentimes are the poor because they're running around with liability insurance and the car that they just managed to be able to pay for. And when these collisions occur, they oftentimes don't have medical. They oftentimes can't replace their car, and it causes problems for them. So I, I think that's really worthy to be shared here tonight with that. We, we see this a lot. So I would like to be able to help answer any additional questions you may have. I've got John Rogers here. He's been working with this program at least for the past 20 years under this name, and probably another five prior to that. Sergeant Rogers. Oh, hang on.
Councilmember Duer. Councilmember Doer.
Sorry, um, thank you, Chief. I just, I just want to clarify, when you say we're, we're heavily into education, we're not educating people who are going 30 miles above the speed limit, are we? I mean, there's a consequence to going 30 miles above this limit. Right?
Yeah, uh, you know, it, it's kind of one of those things, you know, I call that, I think everybody who drives has a, a feeling of what is safe to speed. Now, I'll just tell you straight up, every mile an hour over the speed limit, it takes longer to stop. That's a fact of the matter. And, and you've probably also heard me say that, um, West Coast law enforcement, when it comes to these type of things, it's a whole lot different, uh, than all East Coast. I've, I've said a few times on here to city council, go east, make a hard ride at the Mississippi and things change dramatically. If you look at like a recent New York Times, uh, expose that was done, you'll find that most of the cities that rely heavily on revenue from traffic citations are in that area. That's not us. I, they show one dot in Washington and it looks like it's a south end of Puget Sound. I don't know what city that is. I don't want to be that city. But that, yeah, we'll, we'll, we will talk to them. We may not write them for their full amount, but again, if you're doing 30 miles an hour over the speed limit, you're looking at reckless or nag. That, that's serious.
Yeah, well, I'm, I don't know if you knew this when you said it, but I'm from the East Coast, so I, I'm not sure how to take that comment, but anyway, yeah, I just, I, I, I'm just hoping that we're not ignoring people having egregious, um, speeding um, at the expensive, potentially killing people. Um, that's all. So.
No, no, and I, I want to be clear on that. We, we take it very seriously. One of the biggest challenges we have right now, frankly, is just staffing. And, um, what we have seen, and again, I know Sergeant Rogers can speak to this, is we've seen an uptick in our collisions. And, uh, a lot of that, I know for a fact is tied to COVID and just, um, the challenges of trying to have people out there, uh, working traffic. Uh, we all know if you see blue and red lights, what's the first thing you do? You slow down. And that's a, that's a lot of the emphasis patrols is to be visible, to be out there, to let people know, hey, we're working this area, you need to slow down. Probably already addressed enough of that. So I'll let some of us come up with a question.
It's all good. I just was, uh, just a little bit curious how we dealt with, with the egregious speeding sound.
I don't know if it's helpful. I, I did miss the question from council.
Any other.
Um, is, are you looking for any background? I'm prepared to share a little bit about, uh, Target Zero unless you just want to hear the impacts to the city of Bothell, and then I can hand it straight over to Sergeant Rogers.
I, I think just the impacts would be fine. Um, I don't think we need a, an entire presentation on this.
Okay, am I on?
Yep.
Okay, great. Yeah, so, uh, just to answer some of the questions, I think that came up, the impact that it has for us here locally in the city of Bothell is the Target Zero program is really our partnership with the state and other agencies, uh, within the state under the, uh, Traffic Safety Commission. Uh, some of the things, uh, we've talked about over the years and, and, uh, you know, and I've known, uh, maybe even some of your kids, I've been here so long that, uh, you know, I've worked those school zones. And so some of the money that we, uh, we can get through our grant programs actually will go back into the school, uh, by way of teaching. You know, uh, crossing guard safety, they can get equipment. Uh, it also helps us in getting equipments for some of our aging, uh, you know, speed measuring devices or specifically our radars. Uh, there is a component with that, that we will participate in these, uh, Target Zero programs, which is really, um, an all-inclusive program for the state. Uh, you know, it's not just, uh, specific to, uh, high visibility enforcement, uh, or doing DUI. And I think that's, uh, perception that sometimes is out there, but, um, it really ties into everything from education, engineering, uh, to enforcement. So it's been a great program, a great partnership. Um, you know, if, if you go to the dashboard, there's a link in there. I think we might have, uh, some to show you later if you want to see that. But just showing some of the statistics where not just the DUIs, but also the distracted driving, uh, councilmember Doer, you brought up speed. I mean, that's a significant factor in a lot of our serious injury collisions here in the city of Bothell. Uh, we just had a presentation on stormwater. You know, when we get these collisions, they're leaking fluids into, into our creeks, right? And so more collisions, we're going to have more pollution. Um, so, and, you know, but really for us, it comes back to reducing those injuries, reducing the fatalities. Uh, the, the big uptick that we're currently seeing is with our young drivers, um, under the age of 25, 16 to 25, uh, of all the stops I made last week, almost every one of them was one of our, uh, new drivers, uh, for within their first year of driving. And almost every one of them was twice the speed limit. And so that's another one of those programs where we come back and we, we have the Bothell Youth Court Program, which, you know, is also, I, it's kind of all, um, you know, it's the synergy of this program with Target Zero and the, and the Traffic Safety Commission, where we can have programs like Target Zero, we can have programs like the crosswalk safety for our school zone patrols. Um, and the reality is, even if we didn't participate in Target Zero, we could still do the same enforcement out there. It's not like we're being, I mean, there's no strings attached that we have to do. So many stops, just like I think, uh, Captain Suzie Johnson was mentioning, there's, uh, we don't have that requirement, like there's a quota, like we have to make this many stops. And it, it really is truly more about education than, uh, than enforcement. I think on average, we probably write maybe a third of the people we stop. And a lot of those can be deferred, mitigated, uh, in court. So they might be as simple as you don't have insurance, get insurance, you know, go ask for breaks, especially with our new drivers, if they actually get that first time ticket, they can participate in the Bothell Youth Court Program. And then go through a presentation, participate in that through their school, and then that ticket does not show up on their driving record, which is an excellent program. And, uh, yeah, with that, if there's many other questions.
Councilmember Agnew.
Uh, excuse me, how are we doing in the school zones?
Yeah. The school zones have definitely, uh, been a challenge. Um, with, with, sorry, I'm, I'm going to mute this here. Uh, just like with any other driving areas, we've seen, uh, definitely some significant increases. I think it's more lately, it's been more of an educational piece now that we're having, uh, students and parents back in school. Um, it's really having more of those talks and, you know, like just reminding them, hey, uh, you are in a school zone, kids present, lights flashing, crossing guards are present, you know, please adjust your speed. So that's, we've had a pretty significant educational component, I think, since school started back up.
We have cameras on some of the school buses, is that correct?
No, there, uh, there are, uh, cameras inside the buses. So typically the way that works, if we get a bus paddle violation, I think is what you're talking about. Uh, we can, uh, the school district will send us a bus paddle violation notification. And then we will follow up with our investigation. But at this time, there is no, uh, they do not have, uh, bus paddle cameras on the school buses. There are internal, uh, cameras, uh, that may work. Sometimes they're typically, if like, if the bus is involved in an accident, then the school district can review it.
Actually, I can add to the school zone, uh, question if you, if you would like. Last year, uh, as part of our budgetary process, I was asked to look into school zone radar, uh, programs. And we're currently in the process of doing that. I think it's scheduled for December 14th. Uh, and so there's, uh, there's a whole, this is a really, a big laborious project, I'll be frank. I mean, it requires a lot of involvement from a, a number of parties in the city from, yeah, we have to put up signage, we have to make sure that, uh, we have contracts in place, we've got to figure out who, who is going to provide the service. So, uh, I think December 14th is when we're going to be presenting that to council, both in code and the contract that we're, uh, looking to, uh, get signed. So we can start, uh, moving forward with that with hopes of having it in place by the end of the school year.
Thanks, Chief.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation. Um, I, I appreciate very much your recognition of young drivers and the education they need. As a parent of six young people who are teenagers and are, are, um, being, uh, 88th Avenue Northeast by Bothell High School, used to be the very fast zone for young people. But today, as I walk from 180th up to West Hill, I see there's a police car in the parking lot of the high school, which I think is really good because then everybody's more aware. So I just want to say I appreciate your recognition that young drivers need education and sometimes they need youth court. And that helps them a lot.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have a question more than just a comment. Um, coming off a big season of campaigning, every school, especially elementary schools, a, a place of conversation. And, um, some of it is, can be handled by our, our police department. And I'm, you know, glad we're still talking about, uh, uh, speed enforcement cameras. Uh, every single elementary school set, had people who lived near the elementary school saying, parents, even parents coming to get their kids speed into the school zones, where you would think if anybody's going to be paying attention to speed, it's going to be a parent coming into that school. Um, and so, um, at some point, council needs to have a conversation that doesn't involve our police as much, but how are we going to manage, how can we work with the school district in minimizing the volume of cars that come in for schools? That's a safety hazard. And then, um, that speed piece also where our sidewalks end in our safe streets and sidewalks. Um, I had a, uh, several schools say that for their kids on foot, walking home or riding their bikes home, uh, were at hazard with people speeding through that area. So, um, uh, what you're doing around the schools is really, is very important. And it's a very complicated mess that I think as a council, we need to be focused in, not just supporting what you do, but how are we setting up the, our shoulders to, um, and, uh, traffic flow as well, so that everybody's safer.
Councilmember McNeil.
Um, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, thank you, uh, councilmember Thompson for, for pulling this item to create this robust discussion. I think this discussion is important. Um, in an effort to, to keep our community safe, just listening to, to everybody speak, the councilmembers speak and, and the hearing, uh, some of the comments you made about education and things, it, it concerns me that, that, that we have this uptick in, in speed around our community, you know, as a parent of, of a couple of young, uh, sons, um, you know, it, uh, one accident is all it takes to lose a life and we, we can't afford to do that. And so anything that we can do to educate our community, um, on speeds and, and reduce speeds, not only in school zones, but just throughout neighborhoods as well, um, and educating new drivers, I think, I think is, is an important thing. I had a question on, um, there seems to be kind of a, a, a narrative around this program, the grant program. And I just, I kind of wanted from, from your perspective, from our perspective as Bothell, what, what can this grant, what, what could this grant do for us as a city of Bothell?
John, you want to take that? I think you're probably the most knowledgeable.
Yeah, you know, to start, I mean, I've been with the city of Bothell for just, uh, a little, coming up on 20 years. And before that, I was down in Los Angeles County. And having partnerships like, uh, the Traffic Safety Commission, um, has really given us access to not only training, um, but that critical equipment. And then on top of that, as a benefit to the city, uh, they actually will, uh, help pay for some of that, uh, critical overtime. Uh, so for me, at, at the sergeant level, uh, when I'm trying to get staffing, um, it's, it's a challenge. And so if, if I can, uh, you know, find another source of funding that will help us be present in the community and have those positive interactions, you know, because believe it or not, a lot of those stops that we make could just simply be the taillights out, headlights out, you know, it could just be, uh, helping somebody remedy a situation where they're, you know, possibly distracted. Hey, you know, put the phone up on a holder instead of holding it in your hand. Little, uh, things like that really, I think go a long way with, you know, the Traffic Safety Commission, they've been just an outstanding partner, uh, for us here in the, in the city of Bothell, um, allowing us to have access to not only that education, but as I talked about earlier, some of that equipment that we don't have to, um, spend our own money or, you know, to come out of the city budget, uh, to update some of our radar equipment to, again, make those school zones safer, make those high collision areas a little bit safer. And then the, uh, North Shore School District actually just applied and received the grant for almost $6,800 for equipment and training. So that's one of the components that we also do here in the Bothell Police Department is we work with North Shore. And we help teach the, um, the junior crossing guards and even the new volunteer crossing guards. So, uh, we probably even have a picture somewhere. But, uh, we do that on a yearly basis. So when the new students are starting out, uh, we'll go and meet with them and do a day-long, uh, training session. So, uh, for me, it's just been a, a great partnership. And again, if you were to go to the Traffic Safety Commission, uh, and look at some of the information they have on there, I think they do a great job of kind of painting some of those statistics. Some of them are a little scary. We talked about the young drivers. We talked about, you know, how speed is a factor in there. Uh, there's also some great information you can look at as far as like, you know, pedestrians involved in collisions. Uh, say in the school zone where it's 20 miles an hour, you know, if you get hit at 20 miles an hour statistically, it's, you know, one out of 10 people will survive that collision versus at 40, which is consistently what we can see in those school zones. It's, uh, one out of 10 pedestrians will survive. So if even at double the speed, the, the number greatly, uh, is disfavored for the pedestrian. So again, just getting those speeds reduced, working with, you know, the communities to, uh, to make that happen and educate our, our motorists out there. Um, and then we're talking about bikes, you know, and bike safety and bicyclist and different ways that people are going to get around in our city and how, how we could work in the engineering aspect, you know, through the police department, through traffic safety, uh, to actually make some of those, uh, roadway, walkway, trail improvements. So as we all know, we've all been around walking or riding our bikes and, you know, you don't want to be that bicyclist that's right there on Bothell River Highway as cars are shooting by you at 60 miles an hour because your chances, if you are hit, are going to be, uh, pretty low for a survival rate. And so again, those are programs that we could work with traffic safety to bring about, you know, uh, effects and change. And then there's also the, uh, you know, the media component. Um, so, you know, the city is not really, we're not paying into that, but we're getting the benefit of, you know, the, the media, uh, as far as just educating motorists on different strategies to stay safe.
Well, thank you. Uh, you know, I just, I can't thank you enough for being proactive with this. And, um, it's important that we find opportunities like this to bring the dollars in to, to help, um, you know, go much further for, be fiscally responsible within our community. But the public safety, uh, piece of it, the life and safety piece of it, um, I think comes to, to the forefront for me. Um, and the fact that you guys are doing the work to ensure that our community stays safe, I just wanted to, to say thank you. Um, hopefully, you know, after we've had all these long conversations about bike helmets and things like that, as you alluded to, if somebody's going 40 miles an hour, a helmet's not going to do you any good really. So, um, anything and everything that we can do to help support you and, and, and helping support, keep our community safe and and speeds down, um, I, I, I think it's important. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Thompson.
I'll move the recommended action.
Councilmember Doer.
Second.
Great. So we have councilmember Thompson with a motion to authorize the interim city manager to enter into this agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission with the second by councilmember Doer. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough. We will come back to her. Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
And, uh, it looks like it passes 6-0 with councilmember, uh, McCullough out of the room.
All right. Thank you. And thank you all for answering our questions. All right. So we have the remainder of the consent agenda. Councilmember Doer.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that.
All right. We have councilmember, we have a motion by councilmember Doer to approve the remainder of the consent agenda with a second by councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? City clerk, please.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McAuliffe absent.
All right, thank you. On to our next item, AB-165, Public Hearing on Revenues for the 2021-2022 Biennium and the 2022 City of Bothell Property Tax Levy in Consideration of Adopting the 2022 Property Tax Levy. So I will now open this public hearing. And we have Finance Director Chris Bothwell with us.
Thank you. I have a very brief introduction just to remind you what is in the 2022 levy. So the proposed 2022 City of Bothell Property Tax Levy includes the following: a regular levy to fund general government services, including public safety, plus a 1% increase compared to the 2021 levy; a levy on the value of new construction added to the tax rolls in 2021; a re-levy of prior year tax refunds; a levy for the voter-approved levied lid lift for Safe and Secure Bothell, plus an approximately 6% inflationary increase; a levy for the voter-approved levied lid lift for Safe Streets and Sidewalks, plus an approximately 6% inflationary increase; a voter-approved levy to fund the debt service on the first rounds of bonds sold to fund fire station rebuilding project, plus the debt service on the recently issued second round of bonds for the same purpose. The proceeds of the various levies are required to fund general government operations, including public safety and parks. The value of the aforementioned levies are included in the adopted budget and in the proposed mid-biennial budget update. And that's what's in it.
Any questions? Any public comments on this item?
We did not receive any public comment, Mayor Olson.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, Chris, this is basically just essentially all the voter-approved levies and then 1% on top of that, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. Councilmember Doer, were you raising your card to speak or to move the recommended action?
Move the recommended action.
Then I'll move the recommended action.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Doer.
A second.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve the 2022 Property Tax Levy Ordinance to provide funding for essential local government services in the 2021-2022 biennium with the second by Councilmember Doer. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Great, thank you, everyone. So we have a couple items that I think will take back to back. So let's take a five-minute break or six-minute break and come back at 7:20.
Recording stopped.
Use it, you lose it.
Speaking of that, I have a new one for you.
Oh.
Councilmember. I'll drop it past at some point.
Okay, thanks.
All right, welcome back. So we're on.
Recording in progress.
So we're on to AB 21-166, the 2021-2022 mid-biennial budget amendment. And we have our Finance Director Chris Bothwell. Take it away.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen. All right, so this is the final mid-biennial budget update package. The package includes the routine items, which are the revenue forecast updates, the expenditure updates, and the capital updates. It also includes some non-routine items, which are the discretionary and council-directed changes, excuse me, a partial spending plan for the American Rescue Plan distribution, and a partial spending plan for the property sale proceeds. It also sets aside the remaining unallocated balance of the property sale proceeds. And I'll talk about that a little more in a minute. So this budget update is really remarkable for what it accomplishes. It brings back some popular programs, and it also satisfies a lot of the criteria that we look to as to demonstrate good financial management. So among the, there's two programs that are really popular that are coming back with this budget. Those are the Human Services Grant Programs, which is fully funded in 2022, and also the community programming as provided by our Parks Department is also fully funded in this update. In addition, the update is balanced, so it's a balanced budget, and the fund balance target is achieved with this update, and that's the new 90-day operating reserve target. That target's only been in place for about two years, but this is the first time that we can say that we've achieved that target. So it's pretty exciting. The long-term outlook is stable. You may recall a couple of weeks ago, I came to you and said that if we look beyond this biennium in the out-years, that we have a pretty manageable and relatively small operating deficit. That is still the case, and this update continues that. The biennial asset set aside is fully funded as well, and we haven't been able to say that for a little while. It doesn't solve the problem that we have with upcoming replacements that aren't fully funded, but it at least gets us on the right track going forward. And so I'm just gonna mention some of the discretionary highlights. These are items that the council asked us to add to the budget, so these are all included. I'll go through them really quickly because there's a lot of them. The Human Services Grant Program is fully funded in 2022. The Recreation Program, so that's the folks in our Parks Department that provide community programming, that is also fully funded in 2022. Turf replacement for both of the North Creek fields is also fully funded in this budget. Downtown Bollards are funded. A Park at Bothell Landing master plan update, including partial design, is fully funded in this. A land use and revenue study, this is a continuation of the presentation that you had a few weeks ago from the group Urban Three. That study is funded. An extractor for the new fire station 45. This is an appliance that will allow them to clean their bunker gear, and that will go into the new station, and that's funded in this update. We have an aid car that is scheduled to be replaced in a future biennium, and that is actually being, the replacement is being accelerated, and so the replacement is included in this budget as well. The King County Cities Climate Collaboration Membership is also funded in this budget. And then we have a fun crosswalk and neighborhood signs that are funded in this budget. So there's three related matters that I wanted to bring to your attention. The first is the fire station line of credit is funded with property sale proceeds. This is necessary because to maintain an appropriate operating fund, excuse me, operating reserve in the general fund. The line of credit will be repaid over time with fire impact fees, and so those resources will become available again in the future. Second, I have resources are committed to cleanup for downtown property cleanup. This is an earmark that we're putting in this budget that really just signals that we are intention to continue to do the cleanup on the downtown properties. The council can release those commitments at any time that they choose, but it's just a signal that we're gonna continue to clean up those properties. And then the third item is that we're establishing a budget stabilization and council opportunity fund, and we are putting the unallocated portion of the property sale proceeds in that fund as a sort of holding place until we get to budget development for a 23-24 budget, when we'll talk about the reserve policies and present some data to help us understand whether or not it might make sense to add some additional reserves with some of that money. Or, of course, if the council decides they'd like to fund something else with that money, it's just gonna be sitting there available for spending, but it's going to not be in the general fund. So it will kind of maintain its unique status if we put it in this newly created fund. So the next steps for us are we are asking you to consider adopting the update tonight, and then staff's gonna get busy implementing the budget with those updates. And then in about six months, we will be in front of you again talking about budget development for the 23-24 budget. The first couple of things you're gonna see from that are we will get the CFP committee back together and start talking about the update to the Capital Facilities Plan. And then we're also gonna be looking at the financial policies update kind of early in the budget process as well, and we'll take a closer look at the reserve policy as well as the rest of the policies to see if any updates are required. So that was really quick. I'm going to stop sharing, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, first off, I'm sure someone will be much more articulate than I will be, but I'm gonna make a shot at it, to say thank you to get us to this point where we could have a conversation about meeting some council hopes and dreams came at a big cost. Came at a cost of freezing our budget for a while. It came a cost of personal staff and staff efforts who had, I'm sure, at times felt like a Herculean lift to make sense of where we've been in the last couple of years. So I just have to say thank you for that, and thank you for, I was gonna say, hopes and dreams come true. But there were some things that really mattered to council, and staff really came through in a stellar way in helping make that happen, and I'm very, very appreciative. So there's that, and I have one question. 90-day reserve and thinking about how much, how quickly COVID put us on our butt and kept us there for a long time. Would it be prudent for council at some point to talk about and think about making that reserve broader, bigger than 90 days? Or is 90 days a pretty standard reserve that most municipalities do?
That's a really great question. 90 days is not standard. The floor for an operating fund policy would be about 60 days, which is our old policy, because it's the amount of reserves that you want to have is really based on your revenue mix and how long, and kind of how you feel about revenue disruptions and whether or not you're willing to make adjustments kind of in the moment when you see something like a revenue disruption coming. So one of the things that we want to do during budget development for 23-24 is to go in and really, really kind of dig up some data and figure out what is the right level of reserves for this organization. And so what we intend to do is look at some historical data about some disruptions that we saw in the past, particularly the recession in 2001, and then again in 2008, and just see how those events did affect our finances, and then consider if those things were to repeat, or maybe the economic impacts repeats, but it's a different type of event. What would that mean for us, and what kinds of reserves would we want to have? And so that's something that we intend to do probably in the spring in advance of budget development for 23-24, and think about those reserve policies. I think the organization, I really appreciate your comments because the organization, I have to say, has come a really long way in the last couple of years. And for us to have a 90-day operating reserve in the general fund is really, it's a pretty remarkable accomplishment at this point. But to your point, I think that there is an opportunity to consider doing more too. And so we'll do it, we will present the data and let you all decide what the right number is. But we do intend to really dig into the data and bring that back to you in the spring and have a conversation with you about the right level of reserves. And maybe that ends up being more, maybe you're comfortable with what we currently have, but.
Well, thank you. Thank you for diving into the data, and I'm looking forward to that conversation.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Bothwell. I really appreciate this presentation, and I wondered if you could speak a little to the concerns expressed by the few comments that we got about the budget and what we've done, why, I assume you agree, but why we are being responsible with our budget, and maybe explain a little bit about some of the investments that we're making with the money that we're spending. I think it would be helpful for them to understand maybe why we're deciding to make some of these investments. And then I'm happy to fill in my commentary.
Councilmember Doer, you might have turned your camera off when you did your mute as well.
Oops, sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think that the comments that I heard were about the, first of all, the structural deficit and whether or not, you know, the spending plan is really responsible based on the fact that we do, you know, there is kind of a known structural deficit for all Washington cities. And then their levels of reserves was also another concern I heard. So I'll speak to those two, but if there's anything specific that you want, a specific concern that's out in the community that you'd like me to speak to, I'm happy to speak to that too. In terms of the structural deficit, one of the benefits that we have is that we're in a growing community. And so the structural deficit really refers to the fact that your revenues, certain revenues won't keep up with the rates of inflation. And we're seeing it this year. Our regular property tax levy, the annual increase is limited by state law to 1%, and we're seeing an increase in our costs and inflation of over 6%. And so there is that gap, and we have to figure out how to fund that. One of the benefits that we have of being in a growing community is that we get additional new construction value that's added to the tax rolls every year. And the demands that new construction, depending on the type of construction, the demands that those put on city services a lot of times can be absorbed, and so we do get an additional property tax levy. That means that we're gonna receive more than just that 1% increase for a lot of our property tax levy. In 2022, the amount of new construction added to the tax rolls was over $400,000, which is significantly more than a couple percent of our property tax levy. And the other thing that we have is we saw a really positive development during the pandemic, and we're forecasting this to continue through the end of this biennium, at least, people shopping from home. And so we have seen sales tax leakage historically, kind of forever, because people travel out of our city to destination retail to buy things, and we miss out on that sales tax. We have seen our sales tax hold up really, really well, and we've seen sales tax grow through the pandemic. And so for that reason, our revenues are holding up extraordinarily well. It's unfortunately to other cities, it's at the cost of some other cities. Seattle recently announced that they saw a $46 million reduction in their sales tax collections in 2020, and we kind of saw the opposite effect in Bothell. And so that continued. We don't know what's gonna happen with consumer behavior, but we expect that that probably won't just fall off a cliff, and that consumer behavior is likely to stick around for a while. And so that's what our forecast assumes. And so those two factors really help us out when we're talking about a structural deficit. I do think we have to kind of keep our eye on this issue, and to the extent that we're adding things back into the budget, we want to look for a new revenue source or figure out how we're gonna fund those and be responsible. But I think as it sits right now, we're in a really good position with respect to our structural deficit. The other thing was the level of reserves. You know, I can speak to the fact that we have increased our reserves. We have had a modest surplus over the last couple of years due to really thoughtful budgeting and really good discipline from departments. And so we have added to our reserves even during a really difficult time. We had, there was some investments that were made in the past that, in the downtown revitalization and some other things, that caused those reserves to drain, and now they're starting to come back as we unload some surplus properties and those kinds of things. So I actually think that we're in a really good, if you look at where we were a few years ago, we're actually in a really good place, and the future looks really good for us. One of the reasons that we rely on that, or that we started presenting, or maybe being more upfront, or just publishing more of the six-year forecast is because that is our long-range planning tool to tell us where do we think we're gonna be after the end of the current biennium in terms of operating deficit and that kind of thing. And that's why you see me talk about that a lot is because it gives you a good idea of where we expect to be. And the, it was, there was a lot going on the last time I came to council on the 12th of October. But one of the really important things that I wanted to explain was that that operating deficit out in those out-years has become very small and very manageable. And so I think, to be completely honest with you, I think this is a very responsible budget. I think we need to keep our eye on the ball with respect to the budget and finding new revenue for new things we want to do. But based on current levels of service, I think this is a very sustainable and very responsible budget. And I would say that the increases in our reserves are a demonstration of that. We were recently, this is, I might be going a little too far, but we were recently rerated when we did the bond, we issued the second round of bonds for the fire stations. And Moody's, one of the credit rating agencies, came in, and they dig through all of our books, and we do a presentation, and they don't rely on me telling them that we're up and coming. They look at the numbers and they figure out, you know, what our actual financial status is. And they sustained our rating at AA1, which is extraordinarily high. Average for a city is AA3. And so, you know, all signs say that we're actually doing a really good job. And so those are my comments. If there was a specific thing that's being talked about in the community, let me know what that is. I'll be happy to talk about that too.
No, well, I mean, I just, yeah, I just wanted you to be able to kind of give assurance that we've been very thoughtful about how we're spending money. And some of the things that we are choosing to spend money on are long-term investments, using ARPA funds for investments, using money from the sale of a property to do things that we haven't been able to afford to do, but we need to do, such as the fields, closing down, being able to close down Main Street, for instance. That's an economic development issue, right, where we can help support our businesses and that sort of thing. And so, yeah, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to comment on the thoughtfulness that went into the budget and that we are really being responsible. Maybe not to everyone's liking, but it's certainly front of mind for all of us. So thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think one of the important things I take from this is, first of all, Chris, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. I think, I believe that our sales tax is really strong and increasing because our community feels safe, and they want to be here and gather and support our businesses. So I think that's a really big thing. When you talk about Seattle or some of the surrounding cities, they don't feel as safe. They don't feel that they can just go down the street and be able to shop. So I think we have to think about when we talk about Main Street being closed, that is one of the big things. We also talk about our police department and how they work to be friendly and neighborly and keep our community safe. If you want people to shop in Bothell, they have to feel like they can kind of be safe. So I really appreciate that. Also, I think that we're very, we're in a very good position. We have art funds, we have properties that are sales, property sales, and we've funded human services. So we've done the right thing for our people. I do have one question, and that's because the park at Bothell Landing is one of the things I care so much about, and we have the master plan update. Now, once we do the update, is there resources to kind of fulfill that promise of the update or look toward our next steps? I know that we have money in reserve, or I should say, holding, from the property sales. Holding places. So I guess what I want to say is updating the plan is really important to me, but then what's the next step?
It's a great question, and it's one that we grapple with every time we want to do something really big, like, you know, and it's likely to be an expensive project. We have a couple sources of funding that we have, and they'll also obviously try to leverage as many grant opportunities as they possibly can. The funding sources that we have are, we have parks impact fees, which have some strings attached. There's some specific uses for those fees, but we've accumulated a balance there, and so we do have some money there. It would also be a REIT I eligible expense. Those are largely, REIT I at this point is largely committed to the City Hall lease payment, but we have an opportunity to refund the City Hall lease payment at the end of like '24, '25. So we're getting pretty close. And so there may be an opportunity there. In addition to, I know that the parks people probably want to just jump in and the Capitol people and tell us about all the opportunities that are out there. I know there's a lot of external opportunities to bring funding into the community for projects like that, but I'm not knowledgeable enough to speak to what those are. But you also mentioned property sale proceeds too. That money is still sitting there, and we do have a number of surplus properties that are, you know, still being cleaned up or kind of not ready to be marketed, but there's a lot of value there too. So I think that there are a lot of opportunities to fund, you know, whatever comes out of the study or the update.
And if I could just add on to that, Director Bothwell and Councilmember McAuliffe, is that next year, the council will be reviewing and updating the seven-year Capital Facilities Plan. So the idea is that this revised master plan and some perhaps 10% design will help inform the Capital Facilities Plan related to this project. So to figure out how to fund the next phases, the actual full design, and then finally, construction of the different phases of the park.
And I really look forward to that because it's been a long time coming. And it's time for us to make the Park at Bothell Landing the kind of signature entrance to Bothell, and I hope to see that happen. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. It was a great, I'm so excited to where we are now. Sounds so much better than it did four years ago. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
I know we're gonna have lots more conversations about this, but immediately following Councilmember McAuliffe bringing up the Park at Bothell Landing, I just want to bring a pitch that I think it would be pretty cool to have a pump track and a skate park right on Bothell Landing. And we've got two enormous parking lots planned that are like the most expensive part of the master plan, and take up a bunch of space, and we could put a pump track and a skate park right there. And I think having that at the gateway of our city would say something really cool about our priorities as a city. And I'd be proud to have that right at the front of our city. So. Oh, the other thing that I just wanted to clarify, interim city manager, the amount that we've got earmarked for Bothell Landing for that plan work, that is not a set amount that we are going to spend regardless of anything. That is kind of an estimate, and we'll have, none of that money is gonna be spent until that conversation comes back to us, correct?
That's correct. The design contract or the consultant contract will come back to the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't think I'd ever, I'd ever say this, but I've been through a few budgets now and budget cycles, and this has probably been my favorite one. I've had all of them. The work that we have done together actually is pretty impressive. It's been a long haul, long road. The work that you guys have done, Director Bothwell, is just, it's incredible. A lot of cities are struggling out there right now, and we are in a good position because of choices that we made in the past. And you, you and your, you know, the staff has helped us to make those tough, tough decisions. But it's gotten us to where we are today. And so for that, I'm very, very thankful that we have you and everybody, the wonderful workers that we have at the City Hall doing the work that they're doing behind the scenes. It makes us all look good, not only locally here, but regionally. When we can start to do things to improve our assets within our community, our community can get out and be active, and they can see that we're doing the positive things. The other thing that I think is very special is being able to fund human services during this tough time, people in need. And I've heard a lot of things throughout our community about what we were, we're not going to do as a council or as a city. But I think at the end of the day, it doesn't matter about what has been said. It just matters that action has been done. We're taking action, and we're doing what's best for our community. And moving forward, I think, you know, you touched a little bit on, we're not, we're not there yet. We still have some work to do to ensure that we have the proper reserves that we should have as a city. And I look forward to our new council working on that and ensuring that we were looking to the future to ensure that we're fiscally responsible, we're stable, and continue to keep that rating that you talk so highly about, which is important for us to go even further. And I just want to say that hopefully, you know, looking into the future, we can, we can find ways to, with our capital facility plans, bring some of these parks, some of these assets to life through public-private partnerships, and finding ways to partner regionally and with private entities so that we can, we can see that those things get built out, and they're not just plants. So I look forward to it. I thank you for everything you've done on behalf of our community, everybody at the city and the council. It's been an amazing journey, and like I said, I didn't think I'd ever say that budgeting process would be fun, but this one, this one, this one has probably been my favorite. So thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much. I agree with James. This is probably one of the best financial outlooks that I've seen since I've been on this dais. So thank you very much for all the hard work you've done, and thank you for making the city a better place.
Director Bothwell, I really loved the energy and enthusiasm that you brought to this presentation for this adjustment. It was easy to tell from the first word out of your mouth just that this was a pleasure to come speak with us. So that's definitely a feat in itself, being able to deliver good, positive news. And yeah, I think as many other council members have said, you know, this is, you know, just a stopping point, a snapshot in time of where we are. There's still work to do. You know, it's a continual process. So I feel that we've made, you know, hopefully, future budget discussions easier and just continue this trend as we move forward into the future with this. So it's definitely my favorite budget discussion that we've had so far. So let's keep it going. So any motion? There we go. Councilmember Doer.
I move the recommended action with pleasure.
Councilmember Agnew.
I second that.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to adopt the proposed ordinance amending the 21-2021-2022 adopted budget as presented. And a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I will gladly be supporting this motion, and I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all that you've done on behalf of our community to get us to this point during this budget cycle. It's been an honor serving with you. I know this is probably going to be your last budget meeting, but I believe wholeheartedly that you're leaving it better than you got it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Saying no further discussion. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Great. Thank you, everyone. All right, on to AB 121-167, consideration of the 2022 user fee schedule, and we will stick with Finance Director Chris Bothwell.
All right, you can't get rid of me tonight. Hold on. Sorry about that. Okay, this is the 2022 fee schedule update. So as the name suggests, the fee schedule establishes fees for city services. We do update the fee schedule annually concurrently with either budget development or a mid-biennial budget process like we're currently in. or a mid-biennial budget process like we're currently in. We do incorporate the changes and the updates into the budget. The routine updates to the to the fee schedule are based on inflation, changes in our cost to provide services, and changes in pass-through costs. We do occasionally have other non-routine updates, and that's going to be the focus of the presentation tonight. So the non-routine updates that we have, we have two for the twenty-twenty-two fee schedule. The first one is the business license fees, and the second one is the capital facility charges. I'll be presenting the business license fee portion, and then I'm going to hand it over to Boyd Benson to handle the capital facility charges. So I've talked about this, the business license fee updates, updates that are required several times. So I won't go into all the history of this item. But as you're aware, we are required to make some changes to our business licensing program that will enable us to move to the state's business licensing system. Back in September, I brought you a housekeeping item that was the first change that we needed to implement to go to the state's system. And tonight I have the second change that we need to make, and it's the final legislative step, and that's to set the rates for the new method. Back in September, I presented three fee scenarios. The first one was a thirty-four dollar per employee fee. And the thirty-four dollar fee would generate the approximately the same amount of revenue as we've historically earned from our business license program. The other fee scenario I provided or I presented was sixty-eight dollars, which was the would generate the amount of revenue that's assumed in the twenty-twenty-two budget. And then the final fee scenario that I presented was a hundred and five dollars per employee, which is the average rate charged by some of our neighboring cities that don't have a Bino tax but also have a revenue generating business license. So they look a lot like us. At the time, I mentioned that we would return to council with a recommendation based on the needs of the mid-biennial budget update. And so that is what I'm here for tonight. So the recommendation is to implement a fifty dollar per employee fee. Now, you'll notice that the increase is less than half of what was assumed in the twenty-twenty-two budget and keeps our rate at less than 50% of our neighboring cities. The average of those is one hundred and five dollars. This is the business impact analysis for the fifty dollar per employee fee. What you'll notice is that the our smallest businesses, those reporting two or fewer employees, would see an average reduction in their business license fee of approximately 14%. And the businesses in the middle, reporting between three and seventy-five employees, would see an average increase between 28% and 70%. And then our largest businesses, those reporting 76 or more employees, would see an average increase just over 90%. So the fifty dollar per employee fee does generate approximately five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars more annually than the traditional or the historic program income. And that presents an opportunity to provide ongoing funding for two very popular programs. And that's the Human Services Grant Program and the Recreation Programs or the that that supports the community programming out of our Parks Department. So we've done some outreach about this topic already. We did, there was a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce Board with a Q and A. Our Economic Development Manager Manager did some targeted outreach to some of our businesses. She reached out to over 130 of our businesses personally, let them know about the changes. And then we, of course, made an announcement on our website and directed readers to additional resources. We have more outreach to come. We'll continue our partner with the Chamber of Com, our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And we have two mailers scheduled. So one of the mailers will come out from the city and let them know about the changes that are coming up. And the second one will come from the new licensing system to let them know how to navigate new resources and where to go for with questions. And then we'll continue with the electronic and website notices advertising additional resources for businesses. And I'm going to stop sharing. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take those. Otherwise, I'm going to hand it over to Boyd Benson for the capital facility charges presentation.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Bothwell. I don't know that I have specific questions, but I I just wanted to thank you for the outreach. And also, just how much I appreciate, let you know how much I appreciate that the funding, that this this increase is tied to permanent funding for human, for the human services grants. That was something that I found very disturbing when we were considering cutting that from the budget last year. And I know this year we're using ARPA funds for some things, but it's being on the Service, Human Services Grant Committee for six years now. I see the need every year, and it continues to grow. And particularly, as a result of the pandemic, the need has only grown exponentially. I also wanted to, I did have a question, actually, and that is that is, will future increases be tied to expanding human services grants? Because we raised the human services grant amount the first year I was on council from seven dollars per resident to eight. So it's now been six years since we've increased it. And I think prior to that, it had been over 10 years. So I'm wondering what the policy will be or if it's something that can come back to us where future increases can also be tied to human services grant increases.
Absolutely. And that will be a council decision. For every time you adopt the budget, you can decide what that number is. The code does say that we will increase the fee by inflation. And so it will be one of the CPI increases that you'll see in the future. And absolutely, we can, we can associate those increases with increased funding for the Human Services Grant Program. We can't necessarily commit a future council or the council is going to adopt the next budget to doing that. But absolutely, there's, there's no reason you couldn't do that. And and something that if the next city manager is puts in their proposal, it's something that absolutely will get in front of you. So.
Can we tie human services grants to inflation, the amounts?
Yeah, I I gotta be, to be totally honest with you, I'm not entirely sure where that number is set, whether it's in the comp plan or somewhere else. But absolutely, you could tie, you could, you could make a statement about the contributions and how much it's going to go up or how much the program is going to, the value of the program is going to increase in whatever document that's in.
Yeah, I would like to see, I would like to see it come back to us in the form of some sort of indexing to inflation. But that's just my opinion. I don't know how the rest of council feels. But I think it's something we should at least discuss. I think I think that's all I have for now. Thank you so much.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you, and I appreciate you, appreciate your outreach to the Chamber of Commerce and also mailers to businesses. Did you receive any responses from them?
We had two businesses reach out to me and set up meetings with me to kind of walk through the changes and talk about how it's going to impact their business. A number of businesses, so the the Chamber Board, as I'm sure you know, is isn't, is large. So I think there's 20 plus members on there, and they brought some questions from their membership that that we talked about during the presentation. So that's, that's, those are the inquiries that we received. I think that the the Chamber was obviously very engaged on this topic with their membership to figure out what the level of interest was and what kinds of questions they had. And so I think that they communicated those back to their membership after the meeting. But I had two additional meetings. And I know Jeannie Asher, Economic Development Manager, also had some, ended some personal contacts with some of the businesses as well, where she answered some questions, too. So.
So, Chris, on a whole, did they didn't object or they just want more information? Which, where were we at? Where are we?
We didn't hear any real strong objections. You know, it was, there's a lot of support for the programs that that this, that the council appears to want to fund with this on an ongoing basis. I think that some of the comments I heard was that, you know, businesses also support those things, the the community programming and the human services grant program. And so there really wasn't any pushback. The only real kind of tangible evidence that I have is that Jeannie Asher, Economic Development, she's actually on the board of the the Chamber. And the Chamber decided after the presentation whether or not to take a position on this issue and which presumably would mean that they would show up to council members and and lobby for us to have a certain outcome for this. Based on the presentation and kind of the messaging, they decided not to take a a position on this, which kind of signals that that they were kind of okay with the direction that this was going. But that's the only real kind of tangible evidence. The businesses I spoke with did not have any real objections to it. They kind of understand it. And, you know, it, they kind of, I mean, as much as you can be okay with your costs increasing, they 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 were as good as you can be with it. It's kind of my read on that.
Excellent. Thank you. And I appreciate that outreach and their responses. They care about our community.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I think I saw that we compared our fees to neighboring cities, and we're still comfortably below. Is that how you characterize it?
Yeah, we're less than 50% of their fees.
Okay. Well, I don't know if that's good, but it's good that we're, you know, competitive in that way, I guess. I really appreciate the staff brought this back tied to an increase or a permanence, I guess you would say, in human services, as well as the parks priorities as well. I remember how much work it was last year to make sure that human services stayed in the budget for 2021. And I'm I'm hopeful that that future councils won't have to to go through that kind of effort. A question that I have is, I got a question. In the fee structure, do we have how much it costs to dedicate a bench by any chance?
That is a great question.
It's not in the list. I can help you with that. It's not in the packet that we got today. But and and that's why I'm asking, just because I I don't know if that exists. I know there are some of them around. And do we know roughly how much that costs?
Aaron might be a better source for that. Sorry, no. Okay. We can, I will ping, I believe, Nick in Parks would probably be the person who might, who would have the answer to that. Let me, I'll ping him tomorrow, and and we'll, I'll send an email through, Aaron, to you all.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
We actually do have a fee for a bench. Nick would be the person to contact. I know that I've got a couple of neighbors that put benches over at the former Wayne Golf Course. So so there is, there is a cost, and it's already out there.
All right. Not seeing any others. Looks like we can go on to Boyd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd Benson, Utilities and Development Services Manager. Can you hear me tonight?
Yep.
I'm scanning. And can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Well, now.
Still you.
Still me. Almost there. There we go. How's that?
There we go.
Outstanding. Thank you. Um, tonight we provide some information to support the recommended 2022 capital facilities charges portion of the fee resolution. Tonight, we have with us Tagi Ocker from FCS Group. FCS Group is a financial consulting firm that specializes in analyzing cities' financial issues. Tagi will provide a short presentation, a few slides to share with you. And there's additional information within the report, October 2021 report titled City of Bothell Capital Facilities Study, which is attached within the packet. So with that, Tagi, would you please take it away?
All right. Thank you, Boyd. Let's go to the next slide, please. So we're going to be covering three main topics. We're going to provide some background on CFCs, share with you the results of the calculations of the study, and then provide a comparison survey for agencies within the area, how their connection charges compare to those in the city of Bothell. Next slide, please. So capital facility charges are typically imposed on newly connecting customers. And important to note, these are one-time charges, not ongoing rates. And what they try to do is provide a method to recover from those newly connecting customers, recover proportionate share of the cost of providing infrastructure to serve those new connections. And of course, as growth occurs, that does provide revenues for utilities and further capital projects within each of those utilities. Next slide, please. So currently, the city has in place CFCs for the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities listed there on the slide are the CFCs in place for typical single-family customer, at least for the water, sewer, and stormwater citywide charges. So for water, it it's just over forty-nine hundred dollars for the smallest water meter size. For sewer, just over thirty-one hundred dollars per residential customer equivalent. And for the stormwater citywide charge, it's just under fourteen hundred dollars per impervious surface unit. The downtown charge for the stormwater utility is over fourteen thousand dollars per impervious surface unit. So I wanted to kind of share before we get into some of the methodology and results where your charges are at this point. Next slide, please. So a a quick overview of the methodology. We're essentially taking infrastructure costs and dividing them by the applicable customer base. So costs are in the numerator and the customer base is in the denominator. Next slide, please. So getting into a little bit more detail here, in the numerator, those costs are formed of two components, of what you currently have in service for your existing system costs, as well as future project costs. And that's then divided by the customers that can be served by those assets. And next slide, please. Using water as an example, we calculated a CFC of five thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars per meter capacity equivalents. So we took your existing system cost of about thirty-three million dollars, added to that future project costs of about twenty-seven million dollars, and divided that by about eleven thousand meter capacity equivalents. And a meter capacity equivalents are measured in flow capacity. So, you know, the larger meter size a customer has, there's a a larger multiple compared to a single-family connection. Next slide, please. So I want to provide a comparison of all the different utilities. On the far left, you can see the city's 2021 existing charges that we that we reviewed on a couple of slides prior. Directly to the right of that are what we calculated as of 2021. And then in the middle is the staff recommended charges for 2022. And essentially, all that is trying to do is apply the annual construction cost escalator to those 2021 numbers. So year-over-year construction cost index adds about 6% to those charges. So for the water utility, the staff recommended charge is adding about eight hundred dollars. Staff recommended charge for the sewer utility adds about sixteen hundred dollars. And then for the stormwater citywide charge adds about a hundred and fifty dollars. One thing to note here is, you know, based on the council direction provided five or six years ago, the downtown stormwater charge was adopted at a, an amount lower than the maximum defensible charge with hopes to promote economic development. So you can see in that middle column there, the 6.3% annual escalator is applied to the existing charge of fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Next slide, please. We looked at a few surrounding agencies and compared the city of Bothell's CFCs with those cities, and in the case of North Shore, a utility district, same for Woodinville. Bothell's current charges are above the city of Renton and North Shore Utility District, but below Auburn, Redmond, and Woodinville Water District. With the staff recommended charges, that would push Bothell just up above the middle there, but still below Iziquah and Kirkland. And wanted to point out, you know, at this point, we don't know what those other agencies are considering for 2022 adjustments. So these are just the 2021 values that we were able to find via online research. Next slide, please. For the stormwater comparison, we wanted to expand the survey a little bit. Stormwater connection charges are a little bit less common than water and sewer connection charges. So we looked at other agencies in the, in the region beyond what was provided in the water and sewer comparison. So you can see down there towards the bottom, Bothell's existing stormwater CFC is one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars above Redmond, Federway, and Kirkland, with the staff recommended charge of one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. That would leapfrog Iziquah and Olympia, but still be below those at the top. You can see ranging from Kenmore all the way down to Des Moines. So just a a comparison of how the current and recommended charges compare within the region. So just a comparison of how the current and recommended charges compare within the region. Always a little bit of a caveat needs to be provided for these types of comparisons. These cities and utility district service areas really vary just in terms of the number and types of customers that they serve, as well as just kind of the topography and other factors that heavily influence the cost of providing service for utility customers. And with that, I'll hand it back to Boyd and he'll cover the conclusion slide.
Yeah, and so, and thank you, Tagi. In summary, the goal is to make sure that growth pays for growth. So for the water sewer, stormwater citywide, this staff's recommending that council will consider all calculated CFCs for each of those. And that's the 5755 for water, the 4714 for sewer, and the 1521 for citywide storm. Once again, for the stormwater downtown, the calculated maximum CFC is slightly higher than what we have now, but staff is recommending to continue with previous council direction of maintaining economic development incentives within the downtown area. So it's, we're just recommending that the CFC be increased by 6.3%. With that said, that can be looked at in the future. If so, we recommend that there is a bit of additional public outreach and some type of evaluation that looks at the difference, the economic incentive versus the increase in capital facilities charge for stormwater. And just a few other notes, we did throw quite a few terms at you, capacity equivalents and ISU, so we didn't want to just like previous service units to not work. We have been increasing our CFCs annually by construction project cost index or escalation. And once again, legally, council can adopt rates up to, but not exceeding the calculated CFC cost. And this, this really does help protect rate payers from, or development impacts. It helps smooth out rate increases. And once again, it helps to make sure that growth is for growth. And I think that's what I have for summary. So at this time, we'd love to entertain any council questions.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Boyd. So these are numbers for single-family residences, correct?
Correct.
So how does it work for multifamily? And I'm, and I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, is there, are they paying a proportionate share or is there in some incentive in terms of fee for more dense housing?
That's a very good question. So for development, we look at their impact pretty much period. So if, if you have a multifamily unit that has six units and 2,000 square feet as opposed to a single-family residential unit that has 2,000 square feet impervious surface for one unit, the multifamily unit and a sixth of the cost per unit as a single-family residential unit. But it is set up so that it's straight across the board. If, if multifamily can provide denser development, which it typically does with more units for, for your sewer surface unit or for more units off a smaller meter or more units with fewer fixtures for sewer, then they, they do pay less capital facilities charge compared to a standard single-family residential unit. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just curious because we're not looking at the numbers. I mean, obviously, more dense housing, right, is cheaper for us to maintain. And so I wanted to be sure, as we look at these numbers, that it's in our best interest and in the developer's best interest to do multifamily housing and where, where the city is actually saving money in existing utilities. And, you know, maintenance and preservation of those existing utilities.
For sure, yeah. A large sprawling, single-family residential with lots of impervious service and a very large water meter supply, lots of fixtures, and which generates a lot of sewage, would pay more per unit than a multifamily unit because they have more impact both on system expansion and also operations improvements, which this is mostly projects because it's not really how we go very day-to-day.
Right, because a multifamily unit is most likely going to be already attaching to a downtown, most likely, infrastructure versus single-family new development. You're putting in new infrastructure, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and to make this really clear and hope I answered the question, this, the math that Tagi showed, it really is, it's buying into the existing system. There's an existing system that rate payers capable. So when someone connects to that, they should pay their fair share. Multifamily typically has less burdens. They're paying for less of that share. And the same with the future projects, development. We need to do these projects to accommodate development, but a multifamily unit has typically less impact. So it typically has less smaller share of pay when it's a service charge.
Perfect. I just wanted to be absolutely clear. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Boyd, thank you for the presentation. It was a great presentation. I know when we did impact fees, we were way behind the times there. But we looked at it again, three to five years down the road to see where we are. Are you going to do the same with these fees?
You know, that's a really good question. Yeah, typically, impact fees and facility charges aren't updated on an annual basis. They're usually updated when a, when the transportation impact program list changes or when the the list of projects for future utility work is, is changed. And what I'll say is, council adopted a new water, wastewater system plan in 2018. We're working on a water system plan right now, and that includes these projects and updated our storm. And we have a really strong 21 to 27 capital facilities plan. So it was a really good time to update these because you have a really good understanding of what needs to happen to accommodate growth. So I don't anticipate that this will be updated anytime soon. With that said, you will see forthcoming, I think it's 2324, this is mostly food development. But when we look at the comprehensive plan, that's another snapshot in time where if growth estimates change or required projects change, then it's a really good time for the city to look at these facility charges.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation and that strong work, young man.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just kind of piggyback off of Councilmember Doer's question. Do we take the amount of new pipe that gets laid in between new construction into account at all? Or is it just like a, you know, here's the like, because, because obviously, there's a maintenance cost to that over time that's significant. Is that, you know, you mentioned like trying to take the whole impact into account, but like how much of the whole impact, I guess?
So I'm going to give that a shot, and then I might hand this off to Tagi because it's actually really interesting. So once again, there's two components of how we can, what we can charge. It's buying into the existing system, which is the depreciated value of that system. And it's buying into the future project costs. So when someone replaces pipe, that's obviously a great thing, but it, it, it does enter in the equation. Tagi, could you please take a shot at that?
Yeah, and to your other point about maintenance, you know, that, that type of cost is typically covered through the bi-monthly rates that customers pay once they're connected. And the main focus of these charges are to recover the cost of infrastructure, not, not the maintenance of that infrastructure, but.
But we don't charge different rates to people that use more pipes, correct? So like somebody that is, you know, at the end of a mile-long driveway, like, or I guess, I don't know if that would be ours or theirs, but like the farther, the more pipe it takes to get to their house, we don't charge them different rates, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I would love at some point in time to be able to scale these impact fees and others, also looking at potential tax revenue from what the property is going to generate. And I know we're going to get some of that data from Urban Three, but I would love to be able to use some of these fees to incentivize the type of growth and the type of building that will be more financially sustainable every year instead of with an impact fee at the beginning. And if we can use a reduced impact fee to incentivize development that makes us a little bit richer every year instead of a little bit poorer, I'd love to do that. So I don't know if that's something that's been on your guys' agenda or not, but hopefully, we can get you some data and use something to, to, to help with that. Do you have any thoughts?
You, you know, I'll say that's, that's a good thing to be discussing, and that might be a discussion at a future date when we can really dive into it. I will say that, once again, these are the maximum for water sewer, stormwater citywide. This is the maximum calculated. We want to make sure growth pays for all of growth. There are options, just like with the downtown stormwater, where there's some other side benefits because of the city development in downtown, it brings another revenue. So previous council looked at reducing that. So that's, that's one way to go. And I, I know you're looking at a more site-specific evaluation. That's what you stated.
Or like zoning specific or like, yeah.
I think that would be worth looking at, but it would probably be very challenging. Because once again, if you get more density, typically, your per-unit facility charges goes down. So there's an incentive right there to get as much density and affordable housing as possible. What I will say, I just want to throw out here, you brought up what if development's at the far end of the line? The good thing about the way our standards are written is when someone develops, they have to install that infrastructure irrespective of the facility charges. So if, if someone chose to develop out in the boonies and bring out a mile water main that the city will have to own and operate in the future, they have to pay for that installation. They have to make sure senior maintenance period, all that kind of stuff. So they kind of self-mitigate with respect to those immediate impacts. Is this answering someone's question?
No, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
I move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to adopt the 2022 user fee schedule as presented and included in the mid-biannual budget update with a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson? I, Agnew, sorry.
Oh, I think we'll both say yes.
Okay, thank you. Passes seven zero, maybe eight zero.
If I'm going to get two votes on something, can I have it be for something else?
All right, on to AB 21-168, Consideration of the 2022 Human Services Grant Recommendations. And we have our assistant, interim assistant city manager, Becky Range.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm here tonight to share the Human Services Committee recommendations for 2022 Human Services Grants and ask for the full council's approval. We've actually talked quite a bit tonight about human services already. So I'll just give you a really brief update and then ask for your approval at the end and answer any questions that you might have. As we've all confirmed tonight, our Bothell community values compel us as city government and city leaders to take part in a support system for our most vulnerable residents. Our comprehensive plan does in fact call for the city to administer general funds to support Bothell Human Services. And city council, you have traditionally used general fund dollars to support our most valuable nonprofit partners. These agencies deliver services and social programs in our community, improving the quality of life for so many residents and families. And they are amazing. They do this work day in and day out, and often, these partners, they don't ask for thanks. They don't ask for much, honestly, but they do amazing work and we should support them. To help administer this grant program, the council appoints three of its members to serve on the committee. Current members are councilmembers Doer, McCullough, and Councilmember McNeil, with Councilmember Agnew serving as an alternate. For 2022 grants, the committee first started out this process by discussing their overall philosophy and priorities. They thought that was important. It was really important to them to identify and fund our strongest and most active community partners who are directly serving Bothell residents, but still trying to find ways to leverage each and every dollar. We talked a lot about the administrative burden of having many small contracts combined with complicated reporting. And perhaps that isn't the most efficient thing for staff or for the nonprofits themselves. The committee also was pretty adamant and asked staff if we could work with the nonprofits to make their reporting requirements as streamlined as possible, knowing that nonprofits, they don't always have the staff that they need to deliver their services. And one of the things that the committee talked a lot about during the last few months was the application process and could we improve that application to better learn how each agency, when they deliver their services, are they able to provide equitable and culturally competent services? So we made some adjustments to the application to ask for that. To better understand the community needs, staff and the committee reviewed, we did a nonprofit COVID survey early on. We also reviewed, there was a recently published King County Needs Assessment for Human Services. We also sought input from our radar navigators and our domestic violence advocate, knowing that they have day-to-day experience with agencies and helpers out in our community. For, one of the things that we talked about as an example of this is that there are many shelters across our region. There's many shelters in nearby cities. But for us, we really wanted to support the shelters that our navigators refer most of the Bothell clients to. That was really important to us, to know who our navigators work with the most when they're looking for services and shelters. We also took a look at public comments from many in our community, as well as some official comments from NUSA that they provided to us in the 2021, 22 budget process late last year. We thought their opinions and comments should be incorporated into our work. All combined, we routinely hear the following as top priorities. Housing access, quality utilities, and rental assistance. Mental health and behavioral health is, to no surprise, a huge need as a result of COVID. And a lot of our providers are really concerned with being able to meet behavioral health needs in our community. Food insecurity and basic needs, things like diapers are pretty important, and health and dental care. Both staff and the committee, we had a lot of honest discussions about our need to better engage with our community partners year-round, actively and routinely soliciting their input to make not only this grant process better, but to make our human services program better. This is a little bit of a challenge for us because we do not have dedicated human services staff. What, with that being said, we're committed to meeting more with our nonprofits and talking with them and learning from them. In fact, we're going to be hosting a meeting pretty soon, in the next few weeks, with our nonprofits, just to better learn what they do and hear from them. The committee reviewed applications and had some robust discussions. And one of the things that your committee members said quite often was that every single agency that asks for money, they're all doing great work and they're all providing value to our community. And we wish we could fund everyone. But we can't, unfortunately. We also discussed the need to have a really good mix of support across different demographic groups. The committee was really concerned that we're supporting children, seniors, developmentally delayed residents. So we tried to find that mix. What I'd like to do is I'd direct you to your packet at this time. There's a very lengthy list there at Attachment 1, listing the many nonprofits that we would like to fund. And, and just so you note, many of the nonprofits have several different contracts within their services that we fund. So a pretty lengthy list there. At this time, I'd like to answer any questions that you might have and ultimately ask for you to approve this list at Attachment 1. Are there any questions for me or the committee?
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
It's something that Councilmember McNeil has brought up a couple of times, and I had the occasion to talk to a community member who was one of these people, is foster kids who age out of the system. Are there needs? Um, are their needs met uh, through the variety of these services here? Or is there an agency specifically here close to us that, that assists, is focused in on foster kids who've aged out of the system?
I am not immediately aware of one agency that that's really their um, specialty or their particular clientele. Um, and I have to say, most of the agencies, they do provide kind of a range of services, but I can look into that more for you. Um, I don't know if anyone else is aware of an agency just that does just that one thing.
Yeah, it would be, I would be interested to know if there's something local and, and uh, councilmember McCullough may piggyback on that in a second. I just have a one other quick question.
Yeah.
Um, uh, radar navigators and our domestic violence advocate and NUSA, all great tools to tap into. Um, and the top priorities that you, that you just gave us and that are listed in our packet, are those a hierarchy or is it?
Uh, it's difficult to say that they're a hierarchy. Um, in, in a slight way, it is because our nonprofit providers, they will tell you, if you don't have quality housing and you're not able to have a safe place to, to put your head down at night, that's, that's kind of um, one of the foundations of meeting your human services need. So.
Yeah, I do. I just, I, I, I just, all of them are real need. I just found the thing where food insecurity fell on this list and was wondering if that was part of just the way the list came together or.
Yeah, and, and we're, we have some ways to go in um, being a little more sophisticated with our data, um, and our research and our analysis. But you're right, all of these things are priorities.
Yeah.
But I will say that nonprofits, um, they do advise us that um, mental health and behavioral health is really increased um, a lot.
Oh, I'm sure. It makes sense. And it's not a criticism. I don't.
Yeah.
I was just curious, so, um, but that's it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And um, there is some focus at the state level to assist those children who age out of foster care. So I know that the state is very involved in that. Um, if, if that helps to answer your question, but there's probably a lot more information like we could gather from them. Um, I do want to compliment you, um, Becky and the committee. You know, kind of, it felt like before we had just spread ourselves way too thin. We weren't exactly sure how many of our own North Shore people we were serving. This to me feels very much like we focused on the people who live in our community. So I'm pleased with that. I'm also pleased with the emphasis on um, on housing and uh, making sure that we don't have people who are homeless not having access to someplace to go. So it looks to me like we've kind of focused on that in this budget as well. So I want to say that I'm very pleased with it. And I think our community is well served. So thank you all.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Becky, for the presentation. Uh, I just want to let everyone on council know how much work Becky Range did in this endeavor. Um, she went above and beyond to make sure, to reach out to our navigators to be sure that we were supporting those agencies and entities that we use most in that program. Um, without being able to um, necessarily know all the numbers of how many Bothell members or community members are served in some instances. That was the surest way to know that we were supporting those services that we need the most. Um, and she did a lot of work in that arena, um, as well as just taking the time to revamp questionnaire. And to, and I think also, you know, one of the things that the committee did, and I think it was kind of spurred by um, something we'd seen in the news, I mean, Mackenzie Bezos gave away her money. Um, one of the things that we read was that um, she chose not to have reporting requirements because she understood that reporting requirements take away from resources of those agencies and that we should trust that those agencies are doing the best that they can with the resources available. And to have um, really exhaustive reporting requirements only takes away from the money that we're giving from, from where we want it to go, what we want it to do. And so that's some, that's a pretty big change to what we've been, we had been doing previously. Um, so I think the committee was all on board with doing that and wanting to be sure that our money um, goes as far as possible. Um, the other thing that I brought up, and I think it might be addressed um, later on, I'm not sure, is that um, I would like to see ARBA funds used um, toward the reinstatement of our domestic violence advocate to full time. Um, and I, in a, in a discussion with the chief, um, he, he and I both were looking at the potential um, increases in that number is, is now that kids are in school and eyes have not been on kids um, for some, you know, over a year probably. Um, those incidences are, are, they are on the rise. And, and we know that mental health is a big part of domestic violence. And in a pandemic, one can only assume that people are more stressed and more prone to that kind of behavior. And so um, I don't know if this is the right venue, but it, it does relate to human services. Um, it's a very big important role in our city. I, I think she does really important work. And um, so when and however we can have that discussion, I would like to have that discussion. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Director Bothwell and I have already spoken about that position. And uh, we will assure that it's on the ARBA list for consideration. I think everyone understands that that position is pretty critical right now. And I want to say one other thing, thank you for your compliments. But I'd also like to note that Catherine Jansen in our executive department, even though she's very busy with a million other things, is really the one responsible for a lot of the behind the scenes work on this human services grant program. So big shout out to her.
Thank you for reminding me. Catherine was amazing. She did a lot of amazing work. She just, she, she's not in front of my face and I apologize.
Oh, sure. Oh, absolutely.
She was, she was critical. So thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
I just uh, also wanted to point out that this isn't the first time that Becky has gone above and beyond for something that's totally not in her wheelhouse or the job description or anything at all. Um, and, and Becky, we notice, thank you. Um, and also just thank you to the uh, councilmembers McCullough, McNeil and Doer that uh, served on this committee um, and brought this forward to us. I will obviously be supporting this tonight. And I, councilmember McNeil, I saw your card go up, so I will not make a motion. I will stop and um, let you take it from here, provided the mayor says that's okay.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, councilmember Thompson. I appreciate that. Um, I just want to say, uh, echo the comments uh, councilmember Doer uh, brought up. Um, there was a lot of work, a lot of discussion, a lot of um, just trying to figure out what the, the true needs were within our, our community and how to best serve our community. Um, and part of that discussion came um, was talking about funding that's available regionally. And how do we best use our funding locally? Um, and put that funding with regional funding that's available to ensure we can help more individuals. And it's not, you know, the, the issues that we face, uh, human services issues we face are not just local issues to the city of Bothell, rather re- regional issues. And often we need to find approaches that we can, we can help uh, in a regional manner. And, you know, we talk about funding that's available in King County. Uh, there's funding available in Snohomish County and, you know, it's an imaginary line. Um, but to understand that there's, there's members of our community that live in Snohomish County and in King County. And how, how can we leverage uh, the fact that we live, we, we, we actually have two counties to, to leverage to ensure we get more uh, funding into the hands of the people that, that truly need it. Um, Becky and Catherine uh, through the process, it's been amazing. I've, I've been on this committee for a while now. Uh, as councilmember Doer said, um, this has probably been the most robust discussion and the most um, uh, planning that we've done since um, I've been on the committee. Um, I know there was a lot of angst at the beginning of, you know, not having enough money to fund. Um, but we had to, we had to talk through things. We had to understand what we were funding, how we're funding it, who, who's going to get the funding and ensuring um, the right balance um, is funded. And so that, that process took a little bit. I'm, I'm thankful that uh, that we all went through it. Councilmember McCullough, you know, you, you talked about the, you know, homelessness, you know, youth homelessness and aging out of foster care. Um, we hear about that, uh, we hear about that regionally quite a bit. Each one of our communities has some, some different needs, right? We're all, we all look a little bit different, but we're all part of the same, same region. Um, when we talk about statistics and, and data and understanding, one of the things that we talk about regionally is, is we, we can put this funding out, um, and we can say we're going to serve uh, members of our community. But, but who is being served? How do we ensure that, you know, marginalized communities, BIPOC communities, uh, the, the folks that, that need the funding the most um, are actually getting that funding? Um, and it's being spread, spread properly. So um, hopefully we can, we can find ways to continue to gather the data to understand who we're helping. Uh, hopefully we can find ways to leverage regional grant dollars to help us um, so that it's not taking away from the funding that we want to put out into the community. Uh, but that, that would be, to me, that would feel like the next steps is to, to be able to leverage grant funding from the states um, and the counties to be able to help us ensure that we're putting that money into the right hands. But, but thank you, everyone, uh, councilmember Doer and, and uh, councilmember McCullough for all your hard work dedication on this. I think our community is a much better place and Becky and Catherine and everyone. Thank you.
So this committee, like many other of the processes in the city during COVID, you know, took a hit, kind of abbreviated and everything. So I'm, I'm very glad to see this come back in such a robust manner. Um, you know, and hearing from Davina and James and Rosemary. Thank you three for uh, adding on to your meeting workloads. And then speaking so highly of Becky and Catherine for their uh, uh, work on, on, on this as well. Because yeah, it, it was a, it's a challenging topic that, you know, as a, it's not a regular committee, uh, but you very much made it a regular committee by uh, committing that time to it. So I, I think it definitely paid off and it shows. So thank you all involved in it. Definitely showed. Councilmember Doer.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
And councilmember McCullough.
I'd like to second that.
All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Doer to approve the recommended grants to support human service needs in the community for 2022 and authorize distribution of funds via grant contracts negotiated by the interim city manager. With a second, but with a second by councilmember McCullough. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't uh, thank councilmember Agnew for uh, participating in the conversation as well. He did participate. Even though he may be an alternate, he was part of the conversation. So thank you, councilmember Agnew.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I also want to thank councilman Agnew because I, I had to kind of leave the meetings for a while and he filled them for me. So thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Door.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Absolutely, yes.
Passes seven zero.
Great job, everyone. Thank you. And thank you, Becky. All right, that brings us to our last item, council conversations. Councilmember Thompson.
I um, forgot to bring this up earlier. I was going to when we um, were talking about the budget. Um, but I just wanted to thank um, our interim city manager, Aaron Lenhart, um, for the process that we had by which councilmembers could bring things forward. They could get staff feedback. They could come on an agenda bill. We could talk about it. Um, that, thank you. Like, I really appreciated that. That's different than we had had in the past and um, we appreciate it.
Councilmember Doer.
I had a couple of things I wanted to talk about, but I'm trying to remember what they are. Um, in regards to the bench costs, I have brought this up for many, many years and I haven't lost hope yet that we could have a little catalog of items that people could buy for our parks, such as benches and picnic tables and trees or whatever. Um, I think people would give, and especially in memoriam, I think that would be a really popular thing to do. And um, certainly seems that given our financial issues, um, that would be something very beneficial um, to the city. So I'd like to have us consider um, once again, maybe just start with a little tiny list. This is what a bench costs. This is what a table costs. This is what it costs if you want a little plaque on it that says, in memory of my loved one. Maybe we can just start small. I just think, I mean, I just think it would be really popular. Um, and I've, I have brought it up many times, but I'm really hoping this time it, it catches. Um, I had something else I wanted to talk about, but I forgot. So I'm just, I'm going to let someone else talk and then I'll go back to it. But um, if, if, if you want to also see that little catalog, please chime in.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Okay, two things. Well, now three things. Yes, the catalog. I would love the, the catalog. Who doesn't love a catalog, especially if it's going to benefit our parks? So there's that. So two things. One is my hero is an unnamed person that I met um, while I was out doorbelling. And since we're right out, uh, we're on the cusp of Veterans Day, I thought I would share this story that someone at a door had shared with me. And um, I'm not going to share it as well as she did. Um, but uh, I happened to be at her door on nine 11. And uh, she's a refugee from Vietnam when Vietnam was falling. And she was telling me about her struggles coming to this country, being naturalized and not feeling like she had a country anymore. And she was lamenting, she said, where do I go? The United States is the last free country in the world. Um, and this country means everything to me. And then she started to tell me why. Because before nine 11, she, she was a naturalized citizen. But she felt like she had no country. She no longer belonged in Vietnam. And she didn't feel like she belonged here in the United States. And when nine 11 was happening, Pentagon, the Twin Towers, um, in pencil, the uh, field in Pennsylvania was happening. She said it all made sense to her, watching the heroes and people flood in to help and rescue, putting their lives at line, lose it on the line, losing their lives. And she said, I finally got it and I finally had a country where I felt like I belonged. And um, that came at the cost of veterans and citizens. And um, that's my uh, tribute to a local hero. Her insights and her experience and uh, meant the world to me. The second thing is when um, one of our candidates had a conversation and I, and I was waiting for them to bring it up and they didn't. Uh, and it, and in, in his research, uh, he found a suggestion that in the community development, uh, a stack of plans, like five plans for ADU houses. So if somebody wanted to build an ADU, they could just walk into our community development, say, I want to build an ADU. This is my size lot. And our community development will say, here's five preview uh, pre-approved plans that you could choose from. Look at them. And that that would expedite the process. So um, I understand that um, some other cities may be doing something similar to that. Um, but that might be something that we would want to consider as a city. So that's, that's all I had to put out for um, um, My piece of our council conversation.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say, I've served only four years on the council, but I've watched it for many years. And I just want to thank our interim city manager. For bringing forward council opportunity funds. We've never had anybody ask us. We could support what you want. We've asked, we've never really had anybody say, here might be some funding. To bring forward your. Priorities, so I just want to thank Aaron Lenhart very much as an interim manager because I feel. So grateful that someone asked me, not only what would you like to see for our community, but also there's some funds that could help you get there. I'm pretty impressed. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans that we have here in Bothell.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Couple of things, the catalog, yes, I think that's a good idea. The ADU, other cities are doing the preapproved ADU plans. So I think that's an amazing opportunity and idea. And then my, the thing that I wanted to talk about is. I had an opportunity this weekend to go to Yakima with players, lacrosse players, seventeen lacrosse players from. Four of our local feeder programs, Woodenville, Inglemore, Bothell and North Creek High Schools. We went over there on a Saturday morning. We had a five game tournament that we entered and we made it to the championship game. And the exciting moment of the tournament was the great sportsmanship that these players had. Knowing that they had won the game. But the ref had missed a goal. They had gone in, we had it on film, but they they left that with their head high, showed great sportsmanship. But they made it all the way to the championship and and I'll tell you that they practiced on North Creek Field Four. One time to go to that tournament, so only being together one time on that field, but it meant the world to them. To be able to go there together as brothers and go enter and win into, go into the championship, so. It was an honor, I mean, I I just, I can't say enough about. The kids that we have in the North Shore School District, these these athletes, these 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 kids, these young men are just doing amazing things and so. I'm I'm thankful that we provide spaces for them to go out and play. And I look forward to providing more spaces when those fields are improved. And I look forward to doing more things within our committee like this for these young men and women, so. Super excited, just wanted everybody to know it was a, it was a special moment for the North Shore area to to have those kids. Enter in that championship game over there.
Councilmember Doer.
I feel this like this is that car game where you have to say, I'm going on a picnic and I brought. An apple, like to go back to what everybody said, um, congrats to the lacrosse team. I may have a special place in my heart for lacrosse players. Happy Veterans Day on Thursday. ADU plans, absolutely, yes, I know Kirkland has ADU plans that are preapproved. And I think that would be fabulous and I remembered the the thing that I forgot to mention. So I was having a conversation with a couple of school board members who will still be school board members after this election. And they had a really great idea, which relates back to something that Councilmember Zornz said earlier. And that was, what if we prioritized bike lanes around school zones? If you think about it, it makes a lot of sense because there's so much traffic from. Dare I say, stressed, agitated and crazy parent drivers. What if we spent that, we ought to, what if we spent our. Money on. Protected bike lanes. I think that's a, a really great audience. You have a limited area. Kids would ride their bikes, probably more kids would ride their bikes to a school than adults will, would ride them to work. I'm not saying we don't take care of the adults in long stretches that get you to Bellevue, but. Around schools, certainly, we can build on the trails we already have. Kids could ride their bikes, parents could stop having to drive their kids. We know there's money coming from the Climate Commitment Act for active transportation. And I just think it makes a lot of sense that we would really invest in bike, protected bike infrastructure around our schools. There's just. So many benefits, health benefits, safety benefits. So it's something that I'm hoping that we can look at adding to our master. Is it a master bike plan? Anyway, I'm not sure. Anyway, would love to hear how others feel about that idea, but. I thought it was a fabulous idea because I think a lot of our traffic centers around parents picking their kids up and dropping them off at schools. And idling their cars for half an hour or more while they wait, so just an idea I thought I threw out there.
Councilmember Thompson.
I could probably be talked into that. And I just, Councilmember Doer, I do not take offense at your characterization of parents, just to be clear. The, no, I I mean, I think that would be a huge win. I mean, parents can drop kids off at school on a bike as well. I mean, skip the line, right? I mean, if you don't have to wait in line, like, that's a win and it's a win for climate, for traffic, for livability, all that stuff. I like the catalog idea as well. I also like the domestic violence advocate being returned to full time if possible. That's something. I would like to explore more. ADU catalog, yes, big fan of anything that makes it easier to build more housing. And I think that's my list.
I'll weigh in on a couple of those items, so yeah, definitely the the park catalog. Yeah, I think it's, you know, come up a couple of times and. Maybe it'll stick this time. Cross our fingers, so yeah, the preapproved plans for the ADUs, I think. You know, whatever we can do to streamline processes and especially. If it's, if it's already imagined and easier to visualize, I think it'll. Get another group of people involved and jazzed up about them. And then I wanted to touch something on Mason brought up earlier, so the pump track in the skate park. I was up at Leavenworth not too long ago and just south of their main street there, they have a park kind of tucked. Away and and they have a a great pump track and a skate park all in the same park there. And it was my first time seeing a pump track and. It's a pretty cool, there is quite a few people using it all at the same time and. Good times had by all. And happy Veterans Day to all the vets out there. Councilmember McAuliffe.
I think we have heard some great council conversations. I thank you for, again, the skateboard park. Because that's one of my high priorities too, and with that, I will ask that we adjourn.
Hey, Rose, Rosemary. I'll carry the flag on that skate park and pump track, okay?
I'll be there for the grand opening.
I wouldn't have it any other way. I would hope you would.
All right, looks like we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.